Before we actually start the meeting, I wanted to announce that we have a distinguished guest with us this evening. Tyler Signarello, who is mayor for the day in San Carlos and is going to be running part of the meeting this evening. And I just wanted to briefly say that I met Tyler in person this afternoon. We were going over how the meeting will operate this evening. And I was very impressed to learn that besides being a seventh grader at Charles Armstrong School, he is a serial entrepreneur. He has already started several businesses. And when I asked him what questions he had for me, he basically said, "The only question I have is I want to know how to apply for a business license." So, you know, we need more people like Tyler. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler to start the meeting. You hit the gavel, right? And then read that.
We called an order, this meeting, of the City Council Successor Agency of the Repel-
To the Development.
To the-
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment Agency. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Very good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask Mr. Malby if there are any changes to the order.
Okay, wait, who's that again? Mr. Malby, is there any changes to the order of agenda?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Ask if anybody on the dais wants to change anything.
Does anybody on the dais want to change anything?
We're good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, then we'll skip this one and then go to this one.
Okay.
And that's where you turn to Cameron Johnson, who's a council member Johnson, is there anything you'd like to comment?
Councilmember Johnson, is there anything you would like to comment on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing to report on since the last meeting is that I attended the two-plus-two committee, which is made up of two members of the school district and two members of the city council. As you might imagine, the main topic of conversation was the land swap and sort of the disposition of the North Crestview site. And there was no specific action that was taken, but it was a good discussion.
Councilmember Grokot, anything you would like to announce?
Not tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Grace- Grisell?
Griselli.
Griselli, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Collins, is there anything you'd like to report?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I took a tour of the Adult Community Center last week and was very impressed with its history. I didn't happen to be back in town. It was the part of my life that I was exiled to another city locally before I returned home. But I was given a very nice tour of the facility that day. Also met with a company called Nature Box. We had lunch with them on our business outreach team last week. Nature Box is a company that makes organic snacks and they sell them online. And their world headquarters is here in San Carlos. They've got about 70 employees or so. It was nice to meet with the founders and some of the employees of the company and found out quite a bit about what it's like to start a business in this town. And it's always good to hear from the people who do business in your town, pay the taxes, and find out what it is that they need, how we're doing as a city, where their employees come from, and where their business is headed. So it was a very enjoyable day. So my thanks to the people at Nature Box for accommodating us. Also had a couple of meetings with two members of the school board and the chairman of the Charter Learning School. And finally attended the Caltrain Modernization Task Force meeting on May 22nd. That's it.
You can ask me if I have anything to say.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's an echo in here. I had the pleasure shortly before this meeting, actually, of making some brief remarks down at the Sequoia High School International Baccalaureate Graduation Exercise, something at the mayors of San Carlos and Redwood City both get invited to speak at. For anybody who's familiar, or maybe not familiar, with that program, it's kind of like advanced placement, but even more so. It requires quite a bit of dedication on the part of students to commit themselves to the high-level effort required for the program. And it was wonderful to see all the parents and the graduates there. They're obviously all very excited. And I did the main thing I promised them to, which was to keep my remarks short, because I told them that was the thing I remembered from all the graduation speeches I heard, is that I wish they were done sooner rather than later. But as a result of that participation, I was given this gift of a box of chocolates. And rather than consume all those calories myself, I'm going to open them and we'll share them on the dais tonight. So I'd like to ask my colleagues to make sure that this box is empty by the time the meeting is over later tonight.
Just leave the box with me.
We're going to stay that long to finish all?
Oh, and I'm going to specifically ask everybody to leave aside the best stuff for Bob after 10:30. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, not really.
Okay. Then let's move-- oh, we should ask Mr. Malby if he has anything he wants to add.
Mr. Malby, do you have anything to add?
I have no additions tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So now we will move on to public comment. Why don't you introduce it and I'll explain it? So we'll move on to public comment.
Now we're moving on to public comment?
Public comment, for those of you who are familiar with our program, or may not be familiar with our program, is when citizens who wish to address us on topics not on the agenda can do so. Topics on the agenda, we have a number of comment cards. When we get to those topics, we will solicit the comments from people. We have at this point one card on topics not on the agenda, and that's Mr. Andre Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and also, what's your name? I forgot.
Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler. Whatever. I come here for almost 11 years now, 10 years. My solar car was stolen here in San Carlo. And when I found it, I went to the police to get it, and the police gave it to the thief. So it's very disturbing. And I've been ever since came to the public here, City Council meeting, and asked to get my solar car back. And so far, nobody has made any move. And so at one point at the beginning, the police chief made a little la by, you know, baby story, called memorandum. And he conveniently forgot the liability issue. And not only that, I never was interviewed, the owner of the solar car. So this is to tell you that perhaps there is something you should learn if you go into politics. It's called "it depends," and it means depending the opinion. And that's also prevent the fact from surfacing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio.
Do we have anybody else who wishes to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay. Then seeing that there isn't anybody else, we move on to--
We are going to move on now to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent calendar, items that are approved en masse by the council without discussion, unless a council member wishes to pull one or more of the items from the agenda, from the consent calendar, which, and if that happens, we will deal with it separately.
Does anybody on the board like to pull something?
Okay. Okay. See none, then you can ask for a motion.
Do I have a motion in second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move reapprove consent calendar items A through K.
Second.
Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes.
Okay. With that, you can say we're moving on to item 8A, and ask me to read it.
We're moving on to 8A.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 8A is consideration of site feasibility study options for the Adult Community Center remodel. Adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Ross Drulus Cusenberry Architecture in an amount not to exceed $234,500 to scope, design, create construction documents, and provide support for the Adult Community Center remodel project C-9322.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, many mayor, and members of the council. We appreciate being early on the agenda this evening. Christine Bowlin, Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight, we're back this evening to talk about the future of the Adult Community Center. And just briefly to refresh your memory, we were here in February and we recommended hiring Ross Drulus, but the council wanted to review other issues and options regarding the center, and you requested a study session. So in March, we presented a study session and held a study session, and we reviewed all the issues going on currently, mechanical, the wear and tear issues, and other things related to accessibility and ADA law. We reviewed a couple conceptual designs from 2012 by another firm that drew some plans, and that included an aquatic facility, underground parking, et cetera. After the March 24th meeting, council was not quite ready to make any decisions, and you requested to review additional land concepts. And now we're armed with consultant assistance. We've identified three site options. All three are deemed unfeasible at this time, as you'll see in a moment. And therefore, the options are keeping the existing facility and building around it, which you requested last month, removing the existing facility. And we have two different scenarios to look at that. Because of the complications associated with these options, they're not feasible at this time. And we'll go into that briefly in just a few minutes. So the staff recommendation before you is the same one as February 24th, and that is to contract with Ross Drulus Architectural Services in an amount not to exceed $234,000 just for the design of the facility. At this time, I'd like to introduce Michael Ross of Ross Drulus, who will briefly review the three options for you. And we promise to be under seven minutes. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Christine. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Mr. Mayor, Mayor Tyler, and members of the council. I'm Michael Ross from Ross Drulus Cusenberry Architecture, and we specialize in planning, programming, and design of public facilities. And prior to proceeding with a renovation and repair program for the Adult Community Center, the city posed other site use options for study and consideration. And this is part of that due diligence process about the ability of the existing Civic Center site in adjoining parcels to accommodate not only the Adult Community Center or an enlarged community center, but also a two-pool indoor aquatic center within the Civic Center block. The scope of work of this study, it basically first defined the overall size and area requirements, not only of the facilities, but also of the site, established the parking requirements. It provided a test, site test fit analysis, to see if those options would fit, and then developed a rough order of magnitude cost for the various options considered. Primarily, the overall size of the facility, no matter what form in options 1 through 3, would be approximately 71,000 to 78,000 square feet, inclusive of the community center, a two-pool indoor swimming aquatic center. And this area includes an outdoor exercise roof area, vegetated roof, as well as the mechanical basement, so it's all not just building area. We spent some time looking at the existing Civic Center parking requirements before we understood the parking requirements of the Community Center aquatic complex. And currently applying just your zoning ordinance and not doing a detailed parking study and peak requirements and shared parking, that we have an understanding that by the zoning ordinance, the current Civic Center is underparked, and therefore, any new facilities that were added to the Civic Center would have to provide additional parking. And the new Community Aquatic Center itself would require a significant amount of additional parking, and so what we proposed for these options of adding additional basement parking levels to it. The existing site is quite beautiful. It's-- San Carlos, obviously, is an infill community. There's not large parcels of land available for facilities like this. And so it'd be a careful insertion of the aquatic center and the community center within your Civic Center block. The Civic Center block, as you know, includes a couple of private parcels, and those would have to be acquired for any of these options to be workable. We considered three options. Option 1 retains and renovates the Adult Community Center and constructs two new buildings around it and one level of basement parking of 38 spaces. This is a very modest increase of parking. But we deemed it virtually infeasible to build a parking basement under the existing Adult Community Center, whereas the other options, where you remove the Adult Community Center, or for shorthand ACC, then you could build larger panels of parking. Option 2 removes the ACC and adds two new buildings and two levels of parking. And option 3 removes the ACC and adds two new buildings and slightly more parking. Option 1 looks like this. Basically, the Adult Community Center retains its prominence on the corner, and behind it, to the east, is a two-pool indoor aquatic center, served by a new aquatics building slash community center with an exercise area on the roof. The two-pool facility would have a big solar panel array that would be used to assist in the energy consumption, for heating the pool and lighting the area. And in this option, the Adult Community Center would be repaired and renovated. And if you chose to repair and renovate per option 1 and not build the aquatic complex in the future, you could go back and do that, should you choose to do so, knowing that one of the cons of this concept is you get less parking. Option 2 locates the new Community Center on the corner, and it's a two-story with a single-stepped story towards the south that has the outdoor exercise area. Again, the two-pool indoor aquatic center is towards the east. And option 3 slides the Community Center towards the library and moves the aquatic center building up towards Chestnut. So we compared the three options. Option 1 retains ACC. Options 2 and 3 do not. All of them require the acquisition of the private land holdings in the Civic Center block. There is a sliding increase in the amount of parking with 38 added for option 1, 204 for option 2, and 220 spaces for option 3. All of them appear to conform to the city development standards relative to setbacks, height limits, and land use. All of them will retain the current Adult Community Center programs and add to those programs, as well as provide a very robust recreational and fitness and therapeutic aquatic program. And there's a significant difference in costs, obviously. These numbers that you see are project costs, they're not construction costs. They're inclusive of construction costs, but that means the numbers that you see that range from $54 million to $82 million includes real estate acquisition costs, construction costs, escalation costs, furniture fixtures and equipment. And basically, it's total cost as escalated to the midpoint of construction, which is January 2019. And to fund something like this, obviously, we take a ballot measure, and Christine will speak briefly to that. But basically, the findings of the study is the site is suitable to locate a new community center or a renovated community center here, as well as the aquatic center. Thank you for this opportunity to work with your team and to present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. This slide demonstrates an example of a general obligation bond, assuming voter approval. Just a couple options were pulled out, the $54 million and the $80 million at different percentage rates with the annual debt service and what that would mean to the average property owner. So that really concludes our presentation. Matt Lee is here also, our city engineer, to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the dais have any questions? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I wanted to clarify one thing that I was looking through some of the proposals. So there's been some conversation about the existing ACC is, you know, widely used by the community. And my read of what the proposals were saying is that the existing ACC has about 17,000 square feet of community, sort of general-purpose community activity space, and that the proposal is, or at least what I could see in proposal 2, would create about over 30,000 square feet of community space. Is that right? So we're nearly doubling the amount of community space that would be available in these proposals?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. And that's community space that doesn't include the pool. That's just meeting rooms, banquet rooms, ballrooms, classrooms, et cetera. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Grokot?
Thank you. So just to make sure I understand what we're looking at here, based on the recommendation, is to go ahead, move forward with a remodel project on the existing building and no further at this point?
This is strictly the design. This does not include construction, which we would come back to after the design has been completed.
I don't think that-- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, he asked, what we're really voting on is just to remodel, not to rebuild.
Correct.
This is just the design, and then another million five to--
This is just the design, which is in the current budget.
The $234--
And it's within the walls and roof of the existing building?
Correct.
Okay. And then I just wanted to clarify one other item, is that going through that process, there would be some meetings, some interaction, and so forth with especially the users of the facility?
Absolutely. Yes.
Great. Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a few, Mr. Mayor. I was a little curious, Christine, about the parking deficit situation, because I don't actually remember that coming up when we were doing the parking study for the downtown area a year or so ago. Matt, you remember the subcommittee that we were on? So I was just wondering if staff could comment on that. That's obviously not something new, but I'm trying to figure out how significant it actually is.
Matt Lee, city engineer. So what we actually did was not a parking analysis or a parking study. We just simply took the zoning ordinance and applied it to the area. So what we did was, we kind of took a look at it from the zoning ordinance perspective to see what the deficit was. Now, if you actually do a parking analysis, you can kind of look at time of day. What we did with the zoning ordinance, when we applied the parking, to look at the parking deficit, we kind of took areas of each building. An example would be City Hall and then the council chamber here, and we applied the needed parking spots for both those locations at the same time. So what we assumed was the ultimate peak demand, if everything was in use at that time. So with the parking analysis, you can obviously use time of day, where it would be different because the majority of the time, the council chamber itself would be used at night when City Hall is not actually active. So the parking deficit could technically be less if you do a parking analysis and use time of day.
Does that mean that if one were to go ahead with this project or any kind of comparable project in the area, you would do that kind of parking analysis, which hasn't been done yet? And we could end up determining that the actual need for the number of parking spaces is significantly less?
Yes.
Where I'm getting at this, where I'm going at this, Matt, is the deficit that's quoted here is so large, even before that structure, the hypothetical structure has been built, I'd almost expect there to be disaster every day around City Hall, and yet there's not. I mean, it's clearly, parking is an issue, but it's not at a disaster level. So it sounds like there's some significant windage in those numbers.
Correct. So what the deficit, if you apply just the zoning ordinance, is looking at peak times. So it obviously isn't a disaster, but if you do come during the middle of the day, there have been observed instances, possibly around from 1:00 to 3:00, when a lot of the facilities are actually open and people are using them, that people may find a hard time finding parking down in the garage and up in the surface lot near the library.
Okay. And I understood the answer to the question that Matt and Bob had asked you, or asked Christine, that this proposal is supportive of the, what I think of as the maintenance and repair sort of upgrade of the facility, the $1.5 million, $1.6 million. In the next round, when a project budget actually comes back, would staff be able to provide us a breakdown of costs allocated between things that are necessary to do repair work and maintenance, basically, versus enhancements to the facility? Is that something that could be done in that phase?
Yes, definitely. So currently, what we're doing right now is, we, once we bring the consultant onboard, we're going to work through the scoping process, and that's where we provide public engagement and kind of determine what would be nice to have and what is a necessity. And as we work through that, and we work further through design, we'll be able to identify the costs for each specific items. And at that point, prior to coming out to bid, we can come back to council and provide those numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
A follow-up, if I may. The questions on the parking that Mr. Olbert was asking about made me remember something that came up when I had lunch at the ACC recently. And one of the things that was pointed out by the folks who were giving us the tour is that there seems to be a need for a more short-term parking around the site. I think they call it green curb parking for drop-off and pickup and that kind of thing. And I suppose that might have, you know, certain time today where that's more needed than others. Is that, or could it be, part of this whole remodel and study of the facility and how it's being used?
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. I think that would be during the stakeholder engagement process, where we kind of just try to finalize the scope of the facility remodel itself. And if that becomes a significant concern through the input of the community, we would definitely take a look at that.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Now we'll go to public comment. Can Patty Brown please come up?
Good evening, Mayor Olbert and Mayor Tyler and council members. My name is Patty Brown, and I'm president of the Friends of the San Carlos Adult Community Center, which is the fundraising or 501(c)(3) organization to provide services and programs to the center. First, I want to thank all of you for visiting with us and taking time out of your busy schedule to actually see what happens on a daily basis at the ACC and meet some of the people-- the people that do frequent the ACC and use its services. On May 9th, we also had a meeting with some of the participants there. There were about 50 seniors and others who attend classes there that met with us regarding the importance of renovating and updating the center, which is what most of our population and our clients support, that we not look at tearing down the facility and having that big break in where they would spend their time, but actually do some significant remodel and renovation to the facility. The facility has been there for 32 years and provided a lot of classes and programs to the community and services that probably about over 100 seniors a day take part in activities there at the center, and 44 park and recreation classes and programs are held there also. Therefore, it's more than just a senior center, it is also a community center. So approximately 2,600 seniors also utilize the center. We would like to see some of the improvements being replacing the HVAC facility and doing some of what was option one. So I think that we are in support of going ahead with option one, utilizing the money that has already been put aside for the senior center and moving forward with that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014 dash...
51.
51. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving a professional services agreement with Ross Drulis Cusenberry Architecture in an amount not to exceed $234,500 to scope, design, create, and create construction documents, provide support for the Adult Community Center remodel project, C-9322.
Discussion?
So let me just say at the outset that I'm planning to support the motion. But that being said, I think the vision that was presented of aquatic center and community center is a really amazing project potentially for this community. Brings a swimming pool to the community, it brings, as was mentioned, it more than doubles the amount of community space for classes and programs and celebrations and things like that, and it adds a lot of much-needed downtown parking. So I wanted to ask maybe the city manager, at this point, is there any plan to bring that item back on the agenda?
There's not, not at this point.
Okay.
Cameron, but, you know, at the pleasure of the city council, we could certainly do that.
Right. So, I mean, you know, we discussed this the other night, and, you know, with a 50 to 80 million dollar price tag, it's a big lift for the city. And my view on it is, if we were to go forward with something like this, we would need potentially, you know, nearly unanimous support from the council. And I wanted to, you know, kind of see where my colleagues are on this, and if this is something that folks are interested in bringing back up and discussing.
Well, to the chair, Mr. Johnson, certainly, it's a worthwhile project. I think, as evidenced by our budget and the capital budget that we have, I think really, I mean, it would almost be a matter of prioritizing what items we think should go before what other items. And if the council feels that this should be ahead of something else, I'm all for it. But perhaps, in my mind, something else might, perhaps the underground things we can't see might, in my mind, possibly top this out, at least at the beginning of the discussion. But again, I think it's just a matter of prioritizing our capital items, because there were, what, 229 million, 250 million dollars worth of capital items? I don't know if this was actually in there. Was this even in there, Mr. Malpey? So again, let's say over $300 million. We just have to figure out, okay, what we would like to do, and, you know, talk about it and see what the will of the council is.
To the chair. I think from my perspective, I'm more excited, I would say, about seeing this building, which was built in 1982, and it's losing its potential because it needs a remodel. And as I said the last time, I think it's a building with really good bones. It deserves a remodel. And so the thing I'm looking forward to, and the reason I support this, is because I want to see it brought up to its more modern potential. And I think it'll be an exciting space for, not just, you know, we renamed it for a reason, and I think one of the reasons is trying to broaden its exposure to the whole community as a community center that's used by our adult population. And I think it can be that, and that's what I took from the tour, is that it can be that if we give it the chance.
And I agree with that. I guess the question is, are you interested in going beyond what's there today?
Well, I'm one for taking one step at a time, so.
Add my two cents. I tend to agree with Mr. Gocot, although, as you know, Cameron, no one wants a pool more than I do. So I would love to have one. I think eventually, we should focus on finding a way to get a community, a true community activity center built. But the ACC is, to me, it's just a treasure that's a little tarnished right now and needs a lot of TLC. And I think that what we're planning on doing and all the remodeling we're planning on undertaking is well worth the expenditure. I don't think it's a question of either or, I just think it's a question of, like Bob says, of prioritizing. And that's what I'd like to see. I don't know if it'll happen in my lifetime, but I'd really like to see a new, a real community center, and at some point, we should focus on it. But for now, the Adult Community Center really needs some fixing up.
Just to sort of weigh in here, let me start by answering Cameron's question directly. I actually do think the vision for this broader community center is a very attractive one. In terms of next steps, I would actually support having staff spend some time to fine pencil the costs, if you will. I mean, we had that little bit of interchange about parking, which, given the fact, as soon as I saw that we were talking about going underground parking, that's just phenomenally expensive. And so every less parking spaces, the fewer parking spaces you have to provide, that has a significant impact on costs. So I would definitely support that kind of work being done, just to get a better sense of what's there. And frankly, at some point, if that looks reasonable, if the council wanted to continue to move forward, we probably ought to try and assess the community's interest in this. Because this is not something that is a practical matter. We could put aside, we could put aside money to fund it out of surpluses, but it would be, you know, generations before you actually amassed the money to do that. So there's a question about whether the community is actually willing to dig into its pocket for this, and that's something you can assess by asking the question of the community. I am going to support this motion. I do ask, following up on the conversation I had with Matt Lee, that when detail comes back to us, I at least would like to see a breakdown between work necessary to provide the tender loving care that various of my colleagues have mentioned, and bring the building back to where it ought to be, separate from things that would be improving its functionality. These kind of projects always have a tendency to start amassing more and more costs on them. And because, in fact, I'm frankly looking forward to maybe doing something bigger down the road, I'd like to make those decisions more carefully than just repairing stuff. And my last comment is, regarding the kind of maintenance there, I do hope that this next budget round and the budget rounds thereafter, we have more money set aside for maintaining the building, because I think part of what we're dealing with is under maintenance for a number of years. That happens, you know, you let the grass grow when the budget's tight, but the budget's less tight now, and we ought to make sure that particularly this extra million and a half dollars we're talking about spending, we actually get the value out of it for a number of years.
May I ask a question of staff, given the request you made? I'd like to know if separating out those two, just repair work versus remodel work, I'd call it, is, will that add any significant amount to either time or cost to perform that?
No, it should not. Unless there's a, unless from the public feedback, we get a significant amount of functionality improvements, then we may have to take a look at not possibly designing those all the way out and kind of just assigning a number to it to begin with. But if it's a minimal amount, as we are anticipating, we should be able to kind of design it all the way through and give you actual estimates.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further, just, ah, sorry.
Discussion.
Discussion. Or, Crystal, may you please call a roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to continue on, or is this the break that you wanted to take?
I think I'm gonna take a break.
Okay. Well, I would like to have everybody thank Mayor Tyler for the excellent job he did One of the little sidebar discussions that Tyler and I were having is, he pointed out to me that it's a lot more challenging to do this than it looks like when somebody walks you through it. And I told him, yes, I felt the same way when I first stepped up here. Tyler, there is one other thing that I realized that many of the people sitting up here have, which you don't, which I'm gonna rectify now, which is a pin for the city. So I hope you will wear it proudly in memory of the work you did for us tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.[1302.49][1302.49](APPLAUSE).
We will now move on to Item 8B, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the results of the Community Satisfaction Survey conducted by True North Research. Good evening, Tara.
Good evening, Arbo Mayor, Council. My name is Tara Peterson, I'm the assistant to the city manager, and this evening, we're presenting to you the results of the Community Satisfaction Survey. The survey was conducted in January of this year, and the goal of the survey is to get a sense of how the community feels that the city is doing. It is to assess the needs of the community, as well as to do some performance measurements. The survey was conducted by True North Research, who also conducted our survey for us in 2012. True North Research is represented this evening by Dr. Timothy McLarnie, and he will make the rest of this presentation.
Thank you, Tara. Good evening, Dr. McLarnie, thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I am Dr. Timothy McLarnie, president of True North Research, and we are a firm that specializes in working with California cities, as well as other public agencies around the state, in doing these types of surveys to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities that they serve. My business partner and I, to date, working as a two-person team, have designed and conducted about 800 research studies for public agencies, and about 300 of them were similar to the type of study we're talking about tonight for California cities, where we're looking at, on the one hand, what are the needs and priorities and preferences of your residents with respect to their services and facilities you provide? And then, at the same time, we're looking at, once you understand what their needs are, how well are you performing as a city in meeting those needs? Where are you meeting their expectations? Where are you exceeding them? And where might there be some opportunities for improvement? I mention this in my experience, because as I go through tonight's presentation, I might make reference to how the results we're seeing in San Carlos compared to what we might see in other cities. And so I wanted you to have a sense for the context from my references and our experience. As I go through the presentation tonight, which really just covers some of the highlights that are provided in more detail in the full report, I welcome questions from council as I go, or at the end, whichever is your preference. I'm assuming it's the mouse. There we go. Okay. Well, we covered the purpose briefly in my introduction, and Tara touched on that. So in the interest of time, I'll move right to the methodology, which is how we went about doing this study. Back in the day, we used to exclusively rely on telephone sampling and telephone recruiting and telephone data collection. It worked really well to develop representative samples of communities. What's happened, as you imagine, over the last four, five years, six years, is a lot has changed in that area. You've had a big migration from landlines to cell phones. You also have caller ID is now omnipresent, and people have been conditioned to call screen when you dial their home. And so we've been recognizing these trends over the years, and we've developed methodologies to sort of address some of those challenges that were with just telephone surveys. And so we're now using for these types of studies what we call a mixed methodology, where we're using multiple recruiting methods. We're not just calling somebody on their phone to try and recruit them for participation in the survey. We're also mailing letters to households with a unique PIN number for that household, which allows us to get to individuals who, if you called their house due to call screening behaviors and other items, it may just be very difficult, if not impossible, to reach some respondents. We've found using multiple recruiting methods works best. We're also allowing individuals the flexibility of participating in the surveys either online at a password-protected website, if they're part of our sample, or by telephone, whichever. And what we found is, by using this methodology, we're getting a higher participation rate, we're getting a more representative sample of residents, and ultimately, it improves the reliability of the study. This was a mixed methodology study conducted in January, as Tara mentioned, about 20 minutes on average for the interview, and we spoke with 410 residents through that random sampling process and using the recruiting and data collection methods I mentioned. Now, because this was a sampling and not a census of all your adult residents, has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling, in that case, it's, in this case, it's about plus or minus 4.8 percent. What that means is, we can be 95 percent confident that the results we're talking about tonight are within 4.8 percent of what we would have found, had we spoken with all of the qualified adults in the city. Okay. So on to the results. This first slide presents the results of a question where we asked how individuals would rate the overall quality of life in San Carlos. Would they say it as excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? What you can see here on this slide is that San Carlos residents have very high opinions of the quality of life in the city. You had 97 percent who said it was either excellent or good. What's interesting, too, is if you break these results down into various subgroups of respondents, so by age, by gender, by how long they've lived in the city, whether they own a home or rent a home here, et cetera, what we found is this positive perception of the quality of life in San Carlos is widespread. There wasn't a single subgroup that had less than 94 percent of residents say that they rated the quality of life as either excellent or good. Now, following this question, we also asked individuals in an open-ended manner, if the city government could change one thing to make San Carlos a better place to live now and in the future, what change would you like to see? By open-ended, what I mean is, we don't present to them any of the choices that you see there on the left side of that slide. We simply ask that question, and we record their verbatim answers. And then we go back and we look at their verbatim answers and group them into the categories that you see here. At the top of that list, what we found is about 13 percent indicated that improving or addressing parking issues in the city was what they thought the number-one improvement should be. Number two there, 11 percent, was reducing traffic congestion. And then the next two, if you combine them together, either no change needed, nothing comes to mind, you get 19 percent. What's interesting about that, it's actually a really positive result, because when you think about the nature of this question, you're handing somebody a soapbox and saying, "Stand up on this soapbox and tell us one thing we can do better as a city." And one out of five residents say either no changes are needed or nothing comes to mind. But it gives you a sense of the saliency of some of these issues in the community. Now, this slide is probably the most important slide that I'll show here tonight, and it's the answers to the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the City of San Carlos is doing to provide city services? You know, because we're asking them to comment on the city's performance overall and in general, and we're not referencing a specific service or facility, this can be considered an overall performance rating for the city. And what we found is, you have 88 percent of residents say that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide city services. You had 9 percent who were dissatisfied, and you had 4 percent who were unsure. That's a 10-to-1 satisfaction to dissatisfaction ratio, which is very good. We've done this type of work for a lot of cities, as I mentioned, and the highest I've ever seen is 98 percent, and I've seen as low as in the low 40s. So it gives you a sense of the... So it gives you a sense of the range. So any time you're at 88%, low 90s, these are really, really good scores. Again, we also saw that these results, when you break it down by subgroups of residents, are very widely shared. There wasn't a single subgroup that had less than 84% of individuals say that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide city services. Now, up till this point, the questions in the survey were very general. It's overall satisfaction with city services, overall quality of life. At this point, we started to narrow and focus on a variety of specific service areas and facility areas. And so for each of the services that you see here on the left side of this slide, we asked sort of a two-part question. The first one, which is shown on this slide, is how important is this service to you? Would you say it's extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important? They were asked in a random order, but we sorted them from high to low, based on that combined percentage, who said it was either extremely important and very important. And what you see is that, when you ask individuals to rate the importance of various city services, as you might expect, public safety services rise at the top of that list typically, and along with Public Works in San Carlos. So the top rated in terms of importance were providing fire protection, prevention, emergency medical services. You had 97% who said it's extremely very important, followed by maintaining a low crime rate, maintaining local streets, providing police services, maintaining storm drains, sewers, and creeks, et cetera. And so it gives you a sense of how, when push comes to shove, your residents prioritize among the services and facilities that you provide. Now, same list of services, only this time, we asked them, how satisfied are you with the city's efforts to provide these services? Are you very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, which are represented by the dark green and light green bars respectively? Or are you somewhat dissatisfied or very dissatisfied, which are represented by the orange and red bars? Before I get into the details, one of the things that sort of jumps off this slide is, there's a lot of green on that slide, right? Green is good. Green indicates the percentage of folks who were either, again, very satisfied or somewhat satisfied. At the top of that list, keeping public buildings and facilities clean and attractive, you had 99% of folks say that they were satisfied with the city's performance in this effort area, providing library services on down. As you look at that list, all but two services had 80% or more of your residents say that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide these services. The only two that kind of stand out beyond that are managing traffic congestion on city streets. You had 66% who said they were satisfied. And then maintaining local streets, you had 78% who said they're satisfied. Switching gears a bit and focusing on public safety, we wanted to have a sense for how safe residents feel when they're walking alone in various settings in San Carlos. And this is a question that the ICMA uses as a standard question for perceptions of safety, and we ask about if you're walking alone in your neighborhood during the day or commercial and retail areas during the day, which are the bars on the left side of that slide. And then to the right are the same settings only after dark. And what you find is that during the day, virtually every San Carlos resident said that they feel safe, walking either in their neighborhood or in commercial retail areas during the day. After dark, that drops a bit, as you would expect. You had 84% who said they feel safe walking alone in their neighborhood after dark, and 79% who said they felt safe in commercial retail areas after dark. The drop between day and night is less pronounced here than we sometimes see. Sometimes we see that, as the sun goes down, the feelings of safety in a community go down along with them. Earlier, we saw that traffic circulation was one of the areas that residents focused on as an area for possible improvement. Anticipating this, we asked some more detailed questions about their perceptions of traffic circulation in the city. And by circulation, we defined that for them as the ability to drive around San Carlos without encountering long delays. And we asked them to rate traffic circulation overall, which is on the left-hand side, and then on major streets in the middle and residential areas on the right. And what you see is, they do distinguish here, right? In residential areas, you had 78% rate traffic circulation as either excellent or good, whereas the comparable percentages for on major streets was 47%. Overall, they gave a circulation, you had about 2/3 or 67% rated circulation in the city as excellent or good. Now, most of the questions in the survey really focus on services and facilities, but one of the things that you also know is that there's a lot more to good local governance than simply providing satisfactory services. There's questions about how residents feel about the city as an agency. Do they think you're responsive to their needs? Do they think you're trustworthy? Do they think you're fiscally responsible, et cetera? And so we asked a series of questions and asked them whether they agree or disagree that these statements describe the city of San Carlos. On the left-hand side, you see that the city is responsive to residents' needs. You had 76% agree with that statement, that the city manages its finances well. You had 2/3 or 68% agree with that statement, that the city listens to residents when making important decisions. You had 72% agree with that. And then one on the far right is a statement that simply says, "I trust the city of San Carlos." And you had 84% of residents say that they trust you. This is actually a really striking result, because if you think about it, as good American citizens, we're taught not to trust government, right? It's part of our political ethos. We're taught to question, we're not taught to trust. So trust is something that is earned. It's not just automatically given. And you have 84% of your residents say that they trust you as a city. Now, we asked individuals whether they had been in contact with city staff in the 12 months prior to taking the survey, and over half of those who surveyed said yes to that question. You had 52%. Of those individuals, we then went on to ask how they would rate their interactions with staff. Were staff helpful? Were they professional? Were they accessible? And as you can see here, staff gets high marks across the board for each one of those performance dimensions. Now, one area where otherwise high-performing cities occasionally stumble is in the area of communication. I've worked with some cities that are -- they get excellent scores on services and facilities, but then when it comes to how well the city is actually communicating with residents, they occasionally find a much softer response. Fortunately, we actually don't find that in San Carlos. When we asked individuals how satisfied they are with the city's efforts to communicate with residents through newsletters, the internet, and other means, we had 85% say that they're satisfied. That's a very good score. I've seen it in the low 90s. One of the things that we tend to find is that a score like this correlates with the types of sources they're turning to for their information about city news, events, and programming. And the bottom line is, if they tend to turn to city-sponsored sources, like the newsletter, for example, for this information, their satisfaction with the city's efforts to communicate with them goes way up. And we did find that. There was a very high percentage of the folks who took the survey who indicated that they do turn to the city newsletter for that type of information, as well as the city's website. Now, right before I got up here, there was a discussion, brief discussion, about priorities. And San Carlos, like most other cities we work with, doesn't have an unlimited budget, right? You have a fixed amount of funds to work with, and you have to set priorities for that. We took an opportunity in the survey to ask residents, how they would prioritize among a series of potential capital improvements, and in one case, service improvements in the city. And to encourage them to a sense of competition, so to speak, so that they don't say everything's a high priority, what we did is, for each one of these items, we asked them to tell us, should this be a high priority, a medium priority, or a low priority for future city spending? If they felt like no money should be spent on this item, they could say so. And we also informed that, please keep in mind that not all of these priorities can be high priorities, right? So we're introducing a sense of competition. And when we did that, what we found is, the number-one priority at the top of that list was widening and realigning Holly Street to improve traffic flow. Number two, right behind that, was making improvements to storm drains to reduce flooding. So of all the projects that we tested, those two were the ones that stood out the top. That doesn't mean that they don't like any of the things on these items, but when you ask them, push comes to shove, if we have to make priorities, this is how they ranked. All right. So what does all this mean? I go into more detail in the full report, and so I'll be brief here and open it up to questions. The first obvious takeaway is that San Carlos residents are very satisfied with the city's performance and the quality of life in the city. And we saw the satisfaction across the board. Overall quality of life, the overall performance that was rating for the city of San Carlos and providing city services, communication scores were strong, the customer service provided by staff was all -- they received high marks for that. And so to the extent that you view this as a report card, and you can, on the city's performance, this is a very good report card. And I can tell you that these are the types of scores, they don't happen by accident. You earn them. And so I think it's a testimony to good leadership and good staff, in terms of their administration, that the residents are as pleased as they are with your performance. Now, having said that, I think like any customer satisfaction survey, it should not just be about, how are we doing now, but also forward-looking, and where can we improve, right? And the survey did provide some guidance in terms of identifying areas that are the best candidates for service improvements from residents' perspective, and those who are managing traffic congestion on city streets, improving addressing parking issues, maintaining local streets and roads, and promoting economic development. If you looked at all of the various services and facilities that are provided by the city, these were the four that stood out as those best candidates for service improvements. And as I mentioned on that last slide, the survey also sort of consistent with the pattern of the questions that we'd seen in other areas, that among the priority projects, two of the four were those that dealt with traffic circulation in one way or another. But then again, we also found storm drains, as well as increasing the availability of sports fields as being top among the proposed capital improvements from residents' perspective. So with that, I end my presentation. I certainly welcome questions and comments from Council, if you have any.
Thank you, Dr. McLarnie. Are there questions? I've got a couple. Ron.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLarnie. Very nice presentation. Just a couple of questions for the moment. I don't know why I always tend to focus on the little things, but we're all feeling good about ourselves. I found this one part about the overall satisfaction, and there's about, what, nearly 9% that are either very dissatisfied or somewhat dissatisfied with the city. Did they give any reasons why they feel that way?
When you -- you know, we didn't ask them -- first of all, one of the things you can do with that group is you can go back and look at what they said their priorities were for improvements in that open-ended question. We can also go back and look at them, as we do in the full report, where we can look at how they compare on their ratings for specific service areas versus others, and you can start to identify some differences in that group versus other groups in terms of how they rate the relative -- the services relative, and you can start to figure out which of those items are keying that group. The challenge is, there's only 9% of 400, right? So you're talking about, what, 35 roughly, individuals? And so what they say is not necessarily generalizable to all dissatisfied residents in the city, because it's such a small sampling of those individuals who are dissatisfied. So I say that because we can get clues to that, but you want to be careful about then extrapolating that to the entire city.
So they may have all kinds of different reasons.
Yeah. It can be -- we can go back and do a little more digging on that particular question, but again, whatever answer we come up with, right, you have to be cautious about saying, okay, well, then that's the reason why -- you know, the reasons for those 9% would necessarily translate city-wide, right? Because it's only 35 people.
True. Okay. And then the other question I had was on the -- on your conclusions, one of them was widening and aligning San Carlos Avenue. I was traveling up San Carlos Avenue today, and everything was fine until I got a little past Rundle School, when I noticed the traffic coming down the hill was back up all the way past Beverly, which is, you know, at least a quarter of a mile, maybe half a mile. Did anybody parse it into Upper San Carlos Avenue, the flat part of San Carlos Avenue?
This was a blanket statement. It simply said, "Widening and realigning San Carlos Avenue to improve traffic flow." So we didn't say north or south. We just said that. I don't know what the city's plans are with respect to that, or, you know, in terms of choke points or what have you, but we didn't distinguish between the two.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Other questions?
Just one question briefly. I know we've done a community survey in previous years. Did your firm do those community surveys, and what's been the trend?
You know, here's an interesting -- we have some of that data in this report. One of the challenges that we -- I mentioned at the outset is, we changed the methodology this year, right? And we did that because we just couldn't in good conscience continue to do the survey methodology, which worked great in the past, but with all the changes I mentioned, is no longer as effective. When you change the methodology, you get a break in a time series, right? And so you can go back and look and say, okay, where did we do better or worse? But there's always an asterisk comparing 2014 to the last one because of the change in the methodology. Moving forward, you won't have that break in time series, provided you continue to use the same methodology. Now, having said that, and qualifying it, the two biggest changes were in the areas of managing traffic congestion on city streets. We saw a significant drop there. And then in the perception of traffic congestion on major streets, we saw a drop there. So it was really traffic congestion-related items that seemed to have a substantial change. The other one's not so much.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
I had just -- you guys didn't have any questions, right? I just had two quick questions. One is, every time I see somewhat-agree category on surveys in San Carlos, I always remember -- I felt for years that almost everybody in San Carlos follows my mom's advice, which is, if you don't have anything nice to say about somebody, don't say anything at all. And so I question, I know it's an anonymous survey, but I question whether or not there's any way of getting a sense of, are people really sharing their feelings with us? Or are they somehow thinking that they're either going to be identified, or that they just shouldn't be saying things? You know, I've never --
Having spent a lot of time reading verbatim responses, I don't get the sense that people are holding back, right?
Okay.
I mean, you get -- when somebody has an issue, they will let you know gladly.
Yeah. I'm actually not thinking so much of the -- when there's an issue, if somebody has a problem. I'm thinking of --
Their concerns about confidentiality, or --
Well, it's also just that I wonder sometimes if, when we lump somewhat-agree and strongly-agree together, we're not perhaps taking away a stronger message than is really there.
Well, and that's a good point. For some of our analyses, we -- first of all, when we ask people, we will typically say, do you agree or disagree? And then we parse it, right? So you get a -- you're getting the agree or disagree, and then you're asking them the degree of agreement or disagreement, right? And so in that way, we can lump them together and say they agreed, right? But for some analyses, we will do that. But for the most part, when you go through our studies, what you will see is, we don't just lump the agrees together. Maybe for discussion purposes, we will, but in the graphic, we're showing it broken out.
Okay. My other question sort of is related to that, but it's a little starker. When you have the slide that had opinion of city staff, the categories there, if I'm reading them correctly, are like accessible, professional, helpful. It's very somewhat -- and then it jumps to not at all.
Right.
And that's a fairly big step. In other words, if I was -- I could see people who might be somewhere between somewhat and not at all. I mean, not at all is fairly stark. So I'm just wondering why that big jump, that's different here than in some of the other measurements.
Yeah. What we've -- it's interesting, because that is a -- you know, we think about scales, right? There are scales that have a real sort of zero point, like satisfied and dissatisfied. You can be satisfied this way, you can be dissatisfied, excuse me. When you think about scales that are like importance, right? There's no such thing as negative importance. There's only zero importance, right? So this is one of those types of scales where we think that you can be -- it's only one-sided. Sorry. Keep hitting that. It's only one-sided. So it's going to go from zero on up. We have had in the past, where you have very somewhat slightly not at all, and what we found is, the slightly category really wasn't capturing but a small percentage of people. And so it was truncated to this scale.
Okay. And I appreciate your explaining that. That wouldn't have been obvious from looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a good point, though. It's a good question.
Any other questions? If -- yes.
I was going to make a motion, so.
Feel free.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-52. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, accepting the results of the community satisfaction survey conducted by True North Research.
My second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Crystal, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Groukot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sergeant. Okay. Now we'll move on to item eight C, consideration of adopting a, oh, excuse me, before I do that, I, I do also, I owe a resident of San Carlos an apology, specifically Betty Torres. I just want everybody to know that Betty actually did wish to speak on the, the adult community center item and due to a mistake that I made in organizing the cards, she got shuffled into the eight C category. So that was my error. I offered to have her come back and address the council now. She declined to do so, but I just wanted to extend my personal apologies to her for having made that mistake. With that, we will move on to item eight C, consideration of adopting a resolution declaring that the public interest and convenience requires the discontinuance of the use of the real property located at three three six to three six four Crestview Drive, APN zero four nine dash zero four one dash zero five zero, commonly known as North Crestview Park or the North, North Crestview Park site, consisting of approximately four acres as a public park, intent to call special election on its discontinuance and setting of protest hearing.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this will follow up to the previous two meetings where we discussed the issue of the discontinuance of the North Crestview Park. I have a brief staff report and there's a, a resolution that's been updated for your consideration that changes the protest hearing date from June 23rd to June 30th, which would be a special meeting. This, the resolution under the statutory scheme under government code thirty-eight thousand four forty is the start of the process. What has to happen by the, by legislation is the council first indicates by a resolution, the one that's before you tonight, of, of an intention to call, intention to abandon the park use and setting the protest hearing. It has some specific statutory guidelines which are incorporated in there describing the property, the, the, the proposed disposition of the park site, which in this case outlines the potential for a sale to the school district or to another person or entity. It also contemplates sale or trade or, or a other compensation. So again, this is just the start of the process. After, after tonight, should you pass the resolution, it requires a majority vote to pass the resolution tonight. You would be setting that protest hearing for June 30th. The protest hearing has to occur between 30 and 60 days from the adoption of the resolution. The park has to be posted with a notice of the adoption of the resolution and we have to publish in a newspaper, general circulation, the resolution that you've, may pass later this evening. The timeline works for the June 30th meeting because the, also at the June 30th meeting, the council would be consistent with trying to have the, the voters speak on this at the November election. We, we need to have the council consider an ordinance that would set that election with the question of whether or not the park use should be discontinued and abandoned. That, because it's an ordinance and the, and the statutory scheme requires an ordinance to be passed by the council, we need to have a second reading, which under the timeline would be the July 14th meeting. At that meeting, you would adopt the, the ordinance and have the matter set for an election should you choose to do so. Now, at the protest hearing on June 30th, this is where the supermajority requirement comes into play because protest, if any protests are received, it will require four of the five council members to override those protests and enable you to adopt that ordinance or, excuse me, to introduce the ordinance and then later on adopt it. Ordinances that are, involve elections, take effect immediately, unlike your standard ordinances that take 30 days to be adopted. The difference being that 30 days is really for a purpose of a referendum and in this case, since the matter is actually going to the vote anyway, there's, the legislature has deemed no need to have that particular process. So I'm available for any questions after that overview. I know it's a complex and detailed area and there are a lot, probably a lot of questions. I see a lot of public here tonight, but I'm here to answer any council questions or if any questions come up later during the, the public comment period.
Thank you, Greg. Questions for Greg? Cameron?
Thanks, Greg. There's been a lot of discussion about ballot language. Can you briefly describe where we are, what the current thinking is, and if, if there are any options as you see it?
Well, the, the legislation itself talks about the question that goes to the voters and I'll just read it. I read it at the last meeting. If the protests are over, this is under thirty-eight thousand four fifty of the government code. If the protests are overruled, the legislative body may adopt an ordinance calling and fixing the date of a special election to submit to the city electors the question of discontinuance and abandonment of the use of the parkland on which the protests were overruled. There's another reference, thirty-eight thousand four sixty, excuse me. I'll get that, I'll get that later for you, but the, the, that language of that statute thirty-eight four fifty leads me to believe that the, the legislature intended that the question be a simple question about discontinuance. However, in your, in your ordinance that you would be adopting to set the election, there could be some legislative findings that could talk about what your proposed disposition is as far as who to sell it to or, or that type, or how to trade it or, or whatever mechanism that might exist. But the problem is that in this case, we might not have that information to be able to put that in, in the proposed ordinance. So it might be that you would want to have a general findings that this is what you intend to do, but the ballot language, I think, would need to be relatively simple to be, to comply with the strict reading of this. Now, there might be some flexibility when we get to the ordinance to, to try to talk about that, but just the way it's worded, it seems very restrictive to me.
Okay. Because, you know, there's some folks who have raised concerns that it could be potentially confusing for voters or voters would not feel as though they have the full information when they're stepping into the voting booth. So from your perspective, your, your legal opinion is that on the ballot, what, what someone is going to be voting, there, there can be no references to what is proposed to be done with the site, only that the site will no longer be a park?
That's, that's my opinion. However, keep in mind that with any election like this, there will be an opportunity to put ballot arguments in favor and against.
In the voter guide.
In the voter guide and that would be another opportunity for the council to speak if the council had a view on how they would like the, the election to go. Their, their, one way is to have the council agendize an item to actually authorize a member of the council or members of the council or the entire council to draft a ballot argument in favor of the, of the proposition. And then the, we also discussed at the last meeting that we could do a companion resolution if the council had more information later on in the process, after we had some more detail, you could make your intentions known through that process.
Right. So that would be a, a ballot measure that would accompany this, it would be a separate line item on the ballot and it would not be binding?
Well, that, that would be the third choice would be to have the advisory measure on the ballot, but I was, I was speaking to a hypothetical situation where there was an essential agreement reached for the, the sale or exchange of the property and the council, that happened before the election.
Right.
You could possibly have, you could probably, you could possibly agendize a, an item to consider a resolution expressing an intention of, of what to do.
I see. And that would be something we would do here, it wouldn't appear on the ballot.
Right. And the advisory measure, you would have to put it on the ballot before August 8th.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I have a number of questions, but I'm considering it might be better to hear from the public first and then ask some of these questions I have later afterwards.
That's fair. Others?
Just a couple. The technicality, when you say supermajority, what do you mean by that?
Well, the, the legislation requires two-thirds vote of the council, but in this case, because it's a five-member council, it's going to require four votes.
If, if, is it?
To overrule the protest.
Is it a supermajority of the council or, or a supermajority of the council present?
Of the council.
So if only three people were here, you'd still need four, it wouldn't?
Yeah, the way it's, the way it reads is of the legislative body.
Okay. So in other words, it's not a matter of if four people or three people, you do percentages, it's, it's based on five, no matter how many people are here?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. And tonight is just a, a majority?
Majority is only required to, to move the resolution.
Did you have a question, Ron?
A couple, yeah.
Go.
Thanks. Thank you, Greg. I, I sent you some questions that I had, I just want to get some clarification. The staff report says that the recorded subdivision map contains no dedication of the park site and that the city owns a park in Vee. Can you give us what the significance of that is with respect to any decisions that we might take toward the disposition of the North Crestview Park property?
Well, the first part of the significance of, of that, the way the city acquired the property through a grant deed is that it ruled out the other procedures for abandoning a park. There's procedure for a park that's part of a plat map that was existing before the city was incorporated, that's one process. There's another where a subdivider dedicated the park. So when we, because the city acquired the property through a grant deed, that procedure is ruled out. So that left the procedures I outlined in the prior staff report, that is, that a park dedicated by the city, which is my opinion, what we have at North Crestview Park, or then the, the exchange through the Public Resources Code that we discussed and the council decided not to move on that, in that direction.
Okay. And then there was this 1975 decision by Judge Miller, which I was a little confusing when I was reading it. There was a decision against the city that basically stopped us from processing a referendum. What, what did that mean?
So in, the, the development up on the Crestview area that occurred in the 1970s was controversial. There were, members of the community were against the development or wanted reduced densities from what was initially proposed. But then the city council adopted a precise plan for the area in the early 1970s. Later on, the council adopted a resolution that provided some detail, and I'm paraphrasing from the court decision, provided some detail on what was, how the development was going to be implemented through the precise plan. Well, residents of the city decided that they wanted to pursue a referendum on that resolution that was adopted after the precise plan was adopted by the council a few years earlier. So when the residents sought to do that, the developer went to court and got, was successful in obtaining a temporary restraining order, stopping the city clerk and the city staff from further processing the referendum that was being proposed on the ground that the it, the decision, the resolution was ministerial or administrative and not legislative. So keep in mind what I talked about in the prior, in prior meetings, that that's all, the only thing you can do a referendum on is a legislative act, not an administrative act. So Judge Miller basically found in the Court of Appeals upheld that the decision, that that resolution that was adopted was implementing the prior precise plan and so therefore upheld the restraining order, which only related to that referendum from the early 1970s.
So the referendum was going to stop the project?
The referendum was trying to stop the project, yes.
That's, I just wanted to be clear on that. All right, and I think my third question was about the, you know, how we would communicate our intention on the ballot measure and I think you largely answered that in response to Cameron's question.
Greg, I just had a couple of, a couple of questions. One, I want to confirm my understanding that, that we could take action tonight to, to set the public hearing, basically, and then, and, and to basically register an intent, I think was the other part of this. But when the public hearing is held, then if there are, if there isn't a supermajority vote in favor of moving forward, that basically ends the process there. So the intent basically evaporates, right?
That's correct. You, you, the protest hearing that you would be setting to overrule the protests, you, you'll need four votes of the council in order to move to the next step, which is the ordinance to set the election.
Got it. And then my other question is about logistics and I guess I'll, I'll phrase it, put it this way. I, I want to understand what's the, the soonest we could reasonably expect to schedule the public hearing and then have the second, the second reading? Because frankly, we are moving closer to summertime and peak vacation season and I'm trying to see how we maximize our flexibility in terms of dealing with council member schedules. So what, what's our flexibility there?
Well, the, there's not a lot with the, the timeline that's laid out in the staff report and that's because in the code, you, we, if presuming you pass the resolution tonight, the protest hearing has to occur between 30 and 60 days from tonight.
Okay.
We have to complete the posting of the site and the publication in the newspaper two times by, by June 9th, under the June 30th timeline. And that's, we have just enough time to get those two publications in there. Wouldn't be as hard to post, but those publications in a newspaper of general circulation two times, five days apart is something that is making it so that this is actually probably the earliest that we could set a meeting is June 30th for the protest hearing.
Okay. And could we, all right, and I, I take it that's the earliest we could set it, you could set it later than that?
We could set it later than that.
But that actually works backwards from what I was trying to say because then, then we start running up against, running out of time.
Right. The, and remember the ordinance, we, actually the last date that you could adopt the ordinance would be reinstituting the July 28th meeting.
Because it has to be at a regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes. The ordinance has to be adopted at a regular meeting.
Could we, I mean, I'm not proposing that we do that, but could we reinstitute a meeting?
You could. This was just voted by the council by resolution, you could adopt another resolution to reinstitute a regular meeting.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? I know, Matt, you said you're holding questions for, after public comment. All right. Thank you, Greg. With that, we are going to turn to public comment. For those of you who have not been here before, we give each speaker two minutes to address the council. As the two minutes clock is starting to run, run down, I will hold up a yellow card to indicate time is expiring. When we hit the two-minute mark, I will hold up a red card just so you can manage your commentary accordingly. I'm going to call up individuals, two at a time, basically one person at a time to speak, but the next person will be on deck so that they'll, they'll know to be getting ready to speak. And we do ask that members of the audience refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, doing whatever else it is that people may feel motivated to do just out of respect for each other's opinions. So first up, we have, and I apologize in advance for messing up anybody's name, we have Tara Simons, followed by Ellen Salisbury.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Albert. I've spoken to you all several times before and I'm very strongly against changing this, this idea about the park no longer being able to be a park. I feel like it's going to be opening a door to things that people in our community do not want and I would just, I would just ask you very much to consider about thinking about things that we can do and things that we should do and consider, consider everyone in our community and consider, you know, what would be happening to this piece of land, which currently is a beautiful park. It's not, you know, done up like some of the other parks in San Carlos, but it is a beautiful location and I would just ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Ellen Salisbury, followed by Judith Selvich.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Salisbury. My husband, Tom, and I moved to San Carlos about four years ago and we really love this town and moved here because of the nature, the beautiful views and the tranquility of our location. I'm a startup executive and a venture investor in Palo Alto. I've been in the computer business for my entire adult life and so my brain works on logic. Logic is the core of the way I operate. And frankly, these conversations really confuse my logical mind. First of all, sacrificing a beautiful park to build a school, one of the last open spaces in San Carlos, the highest park in San Carlos, really a perfect place for a park. It's filled with wildlife and beautiful flowers. We happen to live right next to it. My husband takes pictures of deer and rabbits and things all the time. It's not a perfect place for a school. Access is difficult, upwinding, narrow roads, which I think would be Access is difficult, upwinding, narrow roads, which I think would be very problematic. The construction will be, from what we have heard from some engineers, very expensive because of this deep terrain. So that really is one thing that logically doesn't fit with my brain. The second thing is that we have a number of really smart people, because I'm sure the people on the school board are really smart, but they're insisting on building a new school when they don't have any money. And they said that taking the North Crestview property is the only option. And I just, I couldn't understand that for a long time. And finally, I realized that it's the only option when they need the land for free, when they don't have the money to buy the land. So all of a sudden, the logic clicked. And we'd really like to have more information about this, but we haven't been able to, to see the financials or really see what's available. The city tried to solve the problem with a very creative solution, but I believe is giving away too much, a multimillion dollar subsidy, plus the cost of the special election, and the EIR traffic studies and other things. In spite of the generosity, the school wants it for free, and that's really counter to having San Carlos be the city of good living for all citizens.
Thank you, Ellen. Judith Selvage, followed by Paul Max Peyton.
Good evening. We're, we're meeting here tonight, among other things, to talk about this proposal that the school district has brought to the city of San Carlos to purchase or to acquire North Crestview Park in order to build a new school. This is despite the school district's assurance to the public and the voters when they were getting their backing for the 2012 $73 million bond issue, that they did not need any new land, they had excess land. And now we learn that not only is the city, are they going back on that assurance to the voters, but that they don't have the money to buy North Crestview Park. And that they also have two alternative places where the new school can be built, which they already have, have ownership of. So I respectfully urge you to put this proposal to sell the North Crestview Park open space out of its misery. And I further urge you to save the city spending $32,000 to $200,000 on an election to strip North Crestview Park of the open space protection that it's enjoyed for 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Paul Max Peyton, followed by Mary Ann Lacrosse.
My first appearance at this lectern was on Earth Day 2014. I find it altogether fitting that my third appearance would happen to be on Rachel Carson's 107th birthday. Appropriately, I will prevail upon the words of the late conservationist to speak on the topic of North Crestview Park. It helps to think about the long history of the earth, and how life came to be. And when we think in terms of millions of years, we are not so impatient that our own problems be solved tomorrow. The real wealth of the nation lies in the resources of the earth, soil, water, forests, minerals, and wildlife. To utilize them for present needs while ensuring their preservation for future generations requires a delicately balanced and continuing program. Their administration is not properly and cannot be a matter of politics. Here and there, awareness is growing that man, far from being the overlord of all creation, is himself part of nature, subject to the same cosmic forces that control all other life. Man's future welfare, and probably even his survival, depend upon his learning to live in harmony, rather than in combat with these forces. Those who dwell as scientists or laymen amongst the beauties and mysteries of the earth are never alone or weary of life. This is an era of specialists, each of whom sees their own problem and is unaware of or intolerant of the larger frame into which it fits. We stand now where two roads diverge, but unlike the roads in Robert Frost's familiar poem, they are not equally fair. The road we have long been traveling is deceptively easy, a smooth superhighway on which we progress with great speed, but at its end lies disaster. The other fork of the road, the one less traveled by, offers our last, our only chance to reach a destination that assures the preservation of the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mary Ann Lacrosse, followed by Mary Lou Lathrop?
My point is that I'm going to be very.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Lacrosse. I've been a resident of San Carlos for eight years. I read with great interest the city's counterproposal to the school district regarding the sale of North Crestview Park, and I have to say, I am stunned at the proposed terms, a 35-year interest-free loan that in essence results in a gift to the school district of millions of dollars. Under this deal, the city would be giving the school district over $14 million and probably more. The school district has replied with a counteroffer in which it admits that it can't afford to make these payments, even though the loan would be interest-free and payments wouldn't begin until January of 2016. That means the school district will default if this deal is done. Then what? Will the city take the school back, kick out the students? Of course not. This would force the city to make a de facto gift of land to the district. This proposed deal is irresponsible. The city council has a responsibility to the citizens of San Carlos to manage its assets responsibly and not treat the school district as a charity case. I urge you to reconsider any plans to abandon North Crestview Park as open space and preserve it for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Mary Lou, I think I understood you to say your point had been made. Okay. So, Liz Sekler, followed by El Casamento.
I stand before you with vehement disagreement with the financial and symbolic order, excuse me, offer being made to the San Carlos School District by the city council, and the proposal for a citywide vote to abandon the park space. While the San Carlos General Plan through 2030 stated on page 167, quote, "The city does not currently meet its standard of one mile of hiking trail per thousand residents." It goes on to state that trail miles will be provided with implementation of the council-approved plan identified during Open Space Management Plan, which was to have been completed between 2008 and 2012 fiscal periods. Listed in Table 7, three of that plan, among the eight listed first priorities, was the unimproved city-owned parcel on Crestview. It was listed as priority two. This is all from the City of San Carlos 2007 Trails Connection Plan, and we have been very patient citizens. We understand that putting plans on hold for financial reasons is what we all do. But now, another party has come searching for their priorities to be met, and the city is letting go of more financial resources than it can afford. It stands to lose millions in raw land value because it's abandoning this land, and it isn't putting it up to the highest bidder, should that be the choice. I implore the city council, please don't agree to this deal to remove the park via voter approval. Don't offer the property in exchange for land that is too expensive and ill-suited for its promised development, and do not sell the citizens of San Carlos into future bond measures that beg for further ones to afford what was ostensibly promised to be covered when original bond measures were proposed and granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. El Casamento, followed by Bob Black.
My name is Lee Casamento, and I moved here three years ago with my three young children, particularly because of the quality of the schools in the San Carlos area. As residents, do we not own the city and the district infrastructure, and does it not all come from the same pot? Why should we have to repurchase land for the school district, when what we really need is space for our children to grow and to learn? We need to know, if this does go on the ballot, as it should, what the options are for repurposing before voting, otherwise it doesn't give us a clear indication of what's going to happen.
Thank you, Lee. Bob Black, followed by Christine Pitt.
Good evening, Mayor Albert and members of council. I'm Bob Black, longtime citizen of San Carlos. I shall distill the issue of transferring the North Crestview Park to the San Carlos School District to assessants. The San Carlos School District owned an 11-acre property designated School Site 9. This property was in the general vicinity of Club Drive and Crestview Drive, and it included the property now designated as North Crestview Park. In the early 1970s, the San Carlos School District sold School Site 9 to Lincoln Properties Number 41. Through the efforts of San Carlos Council members, four acres of the 11-acre parcel were saved and became North Crestview Park. Now, the San Carlos School District wants the City of San Carlos to make a ridiculously uneven trade in favor of North Crestview, in its favor of North Crestview Park, so that it can build a charter school there. There are those who contend that the City of San Carlos should accept this trade to show its commitment to educating our youth. And then there are others who believe that this issue has nothing to do with education, but it has everything to do about money. I request that you vote in favor of Alternative 2, do not approve the prop, the proposed resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Christine Pitt, followed by Mike Donahue.
Point's already been made.
Points already been made. Thank you, Christine. So, Mike Donahue, followed by Jennifer Bernstein.
Mayor Albert, councilmembers Grokot, Grisilli, Collins, Johnson. I'm asking you to please put the land swap proposal on the November ballot, so the entire community can have an opportunity to vote on this important issue. My wife and I have lived in San Carlos for 13 years. We have two girls who attend Central and White Oaks. They've participated in AYSO, and now in San Carlos United Soccer. And we have a two-year-old, and I hope he follows in his sister's footsteps. For me, this is a community-wide issue, and I see the three pressing needs of our community here. One is that our classrooms are overcrowded, and we're running out of time and space to accommodate the growing needs of our students in our community. The second is that our existing school sites are, have serious traffic congestion, and we're putting our kids at risk. And the third is that our community does not have enough fields to accommodate the growing number of San Carlos kids who want to participate in sports. I think that was actually borne out in some of the feedback we got from the survey tonight. If we follow through, I hope that the, the city and the district can get together and address these needs. If we follow through with the land swap, we'll reduce school overcrowding, we'll reduce traffic congestion and improve safety for, for our kids, we'll preserve and increase the number of playing fields in the community. If we don't follow through, we get pretty much the opposite. We'll have increased overcrowding, congestion will continue or get worse, so will safety, and we'll have reduced number of playing fields. So I've heard some of the alternatives about allowing this land to sit as open space, and I agree that it's important to have ample open space nearby, and we're blessed with over 900 acres of open space in our nearby community. The second option I've heard is to sell the property for greater money, and while that might be financially appealing, I think the only way that, that will only make our school and park and field situation worse. So I ask that you please consider to put the proposal on the ballot and let the community have their say. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Jennifer Bernstein, followed by Valerie Keller.
City councilmembers, I'm Jennifer, proud homeowner and resident in this amazing town of San Carlos. I have two children, both of whom will attend school next year in the San Carlos School District. In my previous life, before moving to the Bay Area and having my children, I was a middle school and high school teacher in San Diego. I believe we have a great issue to think about. Not simply do we allow the school district to build a school on the North Crestview site, an issue here is what happens if we don't. What is your plan B? If there was a better alternative, I think we would have heard it already. We have lots of amazing people trying to solve this issue. So regardless of how we got here, we are here, we have an opportunity to do the right thing for our city. But I would like to take one minute to imagine what happens if we don't allow the City of San Carlos to use the land on Crestview Drive for a school. Let's say we decide to put the San Carlos Charter School at Heather, 800 students, on a piece of land that isn't large enough for a school of 450. What would the day be like for the teachers and the students at that school? And what message are you sending to those families and to those teachers? How will the students behave? How will they focus? How will they have adequate time to get their energy out, so that we can have, so that they can have successful educational lessons in class? But even more importantly, how will the teachers feel, crammed into spaces not large enough to house one growing school, let alone two? It's no way to support, encourage, and maintain a qualified, passionate, and dedicated workforce. I can speak from personal experience. After several years of teaching, and with great heartbreak, I decided to walk away from my teaching position. Others will do the same. Please don't make the mistake of taking the fabulous and talented teachers of our community and our schools for granted. If, if there's any indication of why people are moving to San Carlos, families with young children, school-aged children, are moving here by the droves, and I'm sure, I'm sure it is not because of a four-acre unused area of land at the top of the hill, but rather it was because of our quality schools. San Carlos is growing, and so west we. Please support our teachers, our children, our community, and our future. Please let us vote.
Thank you, Jennifer. Valerie Keller, followed by Bonnie McClure. Is Valerie Keller here? And we will put her card, is it possible she's in the overflow room, or?
Back.
Back, okay. Bonnie McClure, followed by Jeff King.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. Bonnie McClure, I'm representing tonight the San Carlos Belmont Group of the Sierra Club, Loma Prieta Chapter. We strongly recommend that you vote for Alternative 2, to not approve the adoption of the resolution as written by the city attorney for North Crestview Park. This existing park site provides potential future direct access to the San Francisco Water District open space to the west, as well as a short route to the mid- peninsula regional open space to the southwest. In surveys of our population, trails have consistently been toward the top of the wish list for parks and recreation. San Carlos has been projected to grow to a population of 50, of 35,000 in the future. We don't have adequate parkland now, so why would the city think of selling off prime parkland? Our San Carlos real estate becomes more precious every year. This park site is not only of high value as open space, it's a potential gateway to the vast open space beyond. Given that this property came to the city's ownership as a development mitigation, we believe the city has a duty to save it as an open space for those who are living in this densely populated area of the city, while also saving it for the future generations of San Carlos citizens. The city council should consider not selling this park site. In our view, it would be a violation of the public trust to sell that park. Previous city councils set it aside for our citizens. Let's continue in their spirit of providing parkland for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jeff King, followed by David Levinson.
Hello, Mr. King, and this whole process has been very enlightening. Just wanted to, as a way to illustrate the importance of the San Carlos community working together, and the city and the school district, all just essentially being San Carlos, two entities, wanted to build on, one of the ideas that was thrown out is that the, the sale price- of the four-acre land going for $1. So I actually wanted to throw out the idea that it actually should be $4 instead of $1. And the idea behind $4 is that there's 900 acres of open space in the San Carlos area that we all benefit from, which is amazing, I had no idea we had so much space. The piece of land that we're talking about is four acres, so if you divide four by 900, you get .4. So you've got a theme of four there going on, so I think in the spirit of what is the name price, we should all band together and pick for this piece of property. You've got 900 of open space, four acres, about, you know, about this big, so if you divide that, it's .4, and it's been, it's also been there for 40-plus years, undeveloped. I know we appreciate it, and I'm not saying that it's not nice to kind of, you know, walk through there, but I think we actually have a decent logic for a $4 price tag as the community get together.
Thank you, Jeff. David Levinson, followed by James Hayer, Hayer, I think.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Dave Levinson. I'm a resident of San Carlos for the past four years now. We moved here from Southern California, and we picked San Carlos out of the various Peninsula cities, frankly, for the schools. That was one of our major considerations. I have two kids entering the public school system, and I'm here to speak in support of putting the Crestview lot on the ballot so the citizens have a chance to vote for it. We've certainly heard reasonable arguments from both sides. I mean, no one likes to take away open space, that's a high priority, but clearly this is a tough issue. We have a growing city, or at the very least, a city with a changing demographic toward a lot more kids, and a large need for schools, and we're going to have to develop an infrastructure somehow. There's, you know, you walk downtown, it's clear, there's a lot of young kids in San Carlos, and they're going to need to be educated by the school system. In fact, the city survey that we just saw showed that school systems was one of the top things, or education being one of the top concerns for people, or top priorities, and park space in terms of playing fields was also a major, you know, up at the top of the list. Clearly, at least one new school is going to be needed in the near future, if not more, as this sort of large number of kids enter the public school system. And as far as I can see, this is really the best option of those available for us in terms of something we can do to start to move in the direction of solving that problem. We've heard a lot of "not in my backyard" comments from people who live in the vicinity, and certainly we're all sympathetic to that. I don't think anybody wants to put someone out or take away someone's view, but with respect to the issue for the city at large, it's, it seems like this really is the best thing for us to do, and at the very least, I'd like to encourage the Council to continue the negotiations with the city. We're seeing some progress being made there, and that's encouraging, and ultimately put it to a vote for the city so that the city can decide. Thank you.
Thank you, David. James, it's either Hayer or Howar, I apologize, followed by Carrie Bailey.
Good evening, Council and fellow citizens. My name is James Howar, and I'm a dad, and my son Alexander tonight is receiving an award at Tierra Linda for completing a ropes project, which is a customer service award that the students are challenged to do each year in the fourth, sixth, and eighth grade, and this is his second of a trifecta we're hoping for. And this last year, Alexander played AYSO soccer, and he went 17 and zero, 17 wins and zero losses. He was in the keeper, he was a goalie, and he was with the San Carlos Riptide, who then went on to compete in city league and beat Redwood City and Sammet Hill before falling over in San Car, or, excuse me, over in Foster City to substandard parks, I think. Anyway, it's my concern that this is moving extremely quickly, and I would ask that the Council not move forward with redesignating this space from its park status. As a person who lives on that property, I would much rather see a high school built there so that I could sleep in, and my wife could sleep in, and Alexander could just walk a couple feet and go to high school. I think a high school in San Carlos is probably much more needed. This school that's being proposed for that is exclusive in that it is a charter school, so my son Maximilian, who's five, isn't going to be qualified to go there. So it's really, in my mind, I think we're going way too quickly. We're making a decision that I think has a great deal of impact down the road. I don't think the City realizes, or perhaps I don't realize as much, that the School District has really more to do in the way of planning for high schools than they do for a charter school. So it is a complex issue, it is moving very quickly, and I'd like to ask that the City not move in that direction, and really ask the District to come back with better planning and more resource, more financially prudent resource use down the road.
Thank you, James. Carrie Bailey, followed by Kate Blonnik.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, thank you very much for the jobs that you do for our city. I greatly appreciate that. I'm a resident of San Carlos, a mother of two young children in this community, and we've been here for over four years. I agree with so many of the comments. We are a very educated, invested community of parents and of professionals. I'm standing here to second the request, and third and fourth, that we allow the citizens of this city to put it to a vote, to allow every voter's voice to be heard. I feel that our present need, yes, is to enjoy open space, but our present need in the day-to-day life is our children and the education of our children and the quality of that education. I feel that's provided best when they're given the respect and the attention that every child deserves. Any child within the City of San Carlos is qualified to be part of a charter school. We are a city that stand together in providing the best for our children, and I truly feel that building a new location and providing space for every single child in every elementary school in this city, space to grow and move, is of utmost importance. So I respectfully request that the voters of this city be allowed to have their voices be heard.
Thank you, Carrie. Kate Blonnik, followed by Bill Nieto.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for your time. I actually want to applaud your offer that you gave to the District. I thought that was very nice. It was very good to see you really engaging with the District. I know they don't have the funds to do that, so I really hope that you will sit down and take the offer to do a five-on-five and try to come up with something that works for the City and the District. Looking at the survey that was done, it's very striking to me that traffic is by far one of the most important things, and I'm very worried what will happen if we do not get the Crestview for the school. It's going to make traffic much more worse, and that's already a major concern for the City. And fields, that's been talked about many times, but that's going to become even worse. The District will, you know, has other plans, but I think it's a city that's going to be greatly impacted if they don't move forward with the District and come up with some joint solution. I think the City's going to get the short end of the stick if something's not worked out between the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Bill Nieto, followed by Allison Rosinko.
Councilmembers, on May 20th, this Council made a generous offer that would allow the San Carlos District to acquire North Crestview Park. This offer was at a price a third less than what a developer offered, and 1.5 million less than the City's own appraisal. And taking into account the City's offer of an interest-free loan for 35 years, the City is giving away property appraised at $13 million for less than $6 million. But for the School District, this wasn't good enough. I'm sure if the School District had its way, the City would pay the School District to take this incredible park off its hands. Enough is enough. You have a fiduciary responsibility to all the citizens of San Carlos, not just the School District. School populations rise and fall. Think San Carlos High School. But once this park is lost, it will be gone forever. Please do not vote for a ballot measure that would deprive the City of North Crestview Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Allison Rosinko, followed by John Buchanan.
Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Allison Rosinko, and I represent the Save North Crestview Park Community Organization, made up of concerned citizens who live all the way from Hallmark to the north, down to Edgewood Road, down Club Drive, Devonshire Canyon, Melendi, Britton Acres, Britton Road, and, in fact, all the way as far as El Camino. We are really dismayed at the City's offer to sell our park to the School District. San Carlos cannot create more land on which to build parks. To abandon North Crestview Park will be devastating to the neighborhood and the larger San Carlos community. What is even more troubling is the School District's response, that the City's offer is still not enough. The School District has sold off every piece of usable land it owns, and now wants to fob off on the City its remaining unusable parcels, and is trying to convince you that this is a fair exchange. It's abundantly clear that the School District will be satisfied with nothing less than an outright gift of this priceless park. This would be an incredibly bad deal for the City. Finally, this project is being considered even before the City or the School District has determined that a school can be built on the North Crestview Park site. As we know, there's a potential for underground buried fuel storage tanks, there are other wildlife issues, there's been no EIR done, and we believe that the adoption of the proposed resolution without completion of environmental impact reports violates the California Environmental Quality Act. In addition, we believe the resolution is inconsistent with the City's general plan, and thus, adoption of the resolution prior to amendment of the general plan would violate the California Planning and Zoning Law, and adoption of the resolution violates Government Code Section 38444 because it fails to identify the disposition which the legislative body proposes to make of the park. And I'd like to make one final point. It's been argued here by various people that the School District and the City Council are one and the same, and it's all the same money, and it's all the same cause. I beg to differ. You are, you are a separate entity, you have a different constituency. I urge you to vote no on the resolution before the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. John Buchanan, followed by Rob Holden.
Mayor and Council, my name is John Buchanan. The discussion by the Council of a swap, trade, or otherwise dispose of parkland that has had that designation for over 40 years prompts me to ask, how do each of you value parks and open space in San Carlos? The general plan speaks grandly about their value, but if you've not already thought about it and reached a conclusion, this would be a good time to start. If you tend to consider them as assets, much as a business owner would, then their continued existence will hinge on an economic value relative to current needs. To be fair, all such property in San Carlos should then be subject to this test, so that everyone can experience the effects of this approach. If however you can value a park or open space for the benefit it offers to everyone because of its unique character, specific location, and provenance, and understand the impact of its loss on those whom it most affects, then you acknowledge an intangible that can't be quantified easily. You'll have to apply experience and judgment to succeed here. It's not that park or open space are pearls without price, it's just that the intangible benefits and potential loss impact take on a much higher value than simple economic expectations. Your ongoing attempts to negotiate a deal with the School District highlight the difficulty of fairly evaluating a park in order to abandon it and move it to another location as one would any asset. And this is especially true when we're trying to understand what the return is, and the returns I see so far aren't very good. Using the asset model of park and open space, this resolution implies you could fund the $50 to $80 million needed for the athletic and community center mentioned earlier in your meeting by simply abandoning and selling, say, the 57 acres at Eaton Park. I wonder how that'd go over. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rob, I'm going to have you finish, and then we are going to take a very short break here. I, we will go through the rest of the cards afterwards, after the break.
Good evening. Thanks for hearing my comments. My name is Rob Holden. I'm a 16-year resident. My family's been in town with three kids, attending all the public schools and playing lots of sports and enjoying all the community benefits, including the parks that we have. I'm actually here also representing San Carlos United Soccer Club, which represents over 300 families that play in our club and are sorely deficient of playing fields, as we've all heard. I'm here really to support the swap sale, the swap or sale of the North Crestview site to the School District in order to facilitate a new school site and the development of additional playing fields. This represents a triple win for the City, providing a healthy site for the growing student population, which we've heard, alleviating intolerable traffic congestion on Alameda near Tierra Linda, and dispersing traffic fairly throughout the city, and providing a great opportunity to expand critical additional field space in our incredibly field-constrained community. Listening to the results of the citizens' survey detailed earlier tonight, we heard that the two most important, two of the most important priorities to residents include increasing availability of sports field and alleviating traffic congestion. There's been significant support demonstrated for this initiative, and it's critical that the Council continue with negotiations and debate, and to bring this important issue to the voters of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. As I mentioned, we will continue with public comment after a break. I'm going to ask my colleagues that we be back here by 9:15, please, so that we can keep on schedule. we can keep on schedule. Okay, in the interest of time, folks, settle down, please. Hello, settle down, please. We're going to bring the meeting back to order since we still have quite a number of speakers who wish to address the council. Jason Gish, followed by Rebecca Taylor.
Good evening. Thanks for holding up a session and for giving me a chance to speak, and thanks for getting my name right without me giving you the actual pronunciation mark. So, I'm here to talk about the land swap issue in support of it. I just want to point out that San Carlos styles itself as a city of good living. I think we all agree with it. Clearly, the survey shows that people are, for the most part, extremely happy to be here. Recently, we could probably also call it the city of increasing home values. If you talked to any realtors out there, the prices are going sky-high, which I guess if you're already in is kind of a hooray. If you're trying to get in, it's kind of frustrating. But I think we can also agree that two of the reasons are, and we've had a lot of people talk about specifically, just even tonight, why they moved here, the great schools. It's certainly one of the reasons I moved here with my wife about twelve, something like that, years ago. I've got two children in the school system right now, thrilled with the education they're getting, concerned about the soon-to-be coming overcrowding in the system. Another reason, of course, is the great parks and fields. So, just something to think about is the increased property value that is happening in the city is actually great for the city. It's great for the city council, it'll help your budgets. It actually is pretty terrible for the schools, unfortunately. They don't share the same bucket. Historically, all the propositions that California voters passed twenty-five or thirty years ago mean that we don't get to share in that. So, all these families moving into the system don't really add money to the schools. They certainly don't add space to the schools, neither on the individual campuses or in the classrooms. So, we've got more students to educate, and the district has done studies. So, a lot of these kids, besides the fact that people are moving in, a lot of these kids are actually already here. Wow, that was fast. So, as you know, we've got issues. We don't have room for the students, there's a ton of traffic, safety issues with all those cars on the campuses. I just want to point out, one of the best ways to ruin that cash cow we have of all the improving home values, which helps every one of us who's a homeowner in this area, is to allow the schools to fall and to disrepair or not service our kids well enough, in addition to losing field space, which we will if we do not pursue this land swap and put it to the voters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Rebecca Taylor, followed by Marilyn Brewer.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak in favor of putting the Crestview property on the ballot measure and letting the voters decide. And I think it is appropriate that the city survey we heard earlier noted that some of the most important things to the citizens of San Carlos are traffic and field space. And using the Crestview site for a school will ease some of those concerns. It should distribute traffic more evenly throughout the city, whereas the alternatives are just going to make those worse and reduce our satisfaction. While I certainly enjoy open space, I'm not seeing better alternatives for putting additional students that are, as they say, already here now, and we need to take care of them. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Rebecca. Marilyn Brewer, followed by Cecily Harris.
Good evening. To the compliment, my name is Marilyn Brewer, and I'm a member of the San Carlos Belmont Group of the Sierra Club, and I'm also a resident of Crestview Park. And when you first put forth this land swap in March, I was for it because I really wanted to support our school system, which is having a hard time. But by April, I had a much better idea and understanding how and why we had this North Crestview Park where it was. And once I understood that, I realized we could not let go of it. It needs to be there. So, I'm surprised and somewhat dismayed that the council wants to put this issue on the ballot, and I would ask that you please vote for alternative two. San Carlos can't afford to lose any more parkland, and I thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Cecily Harris, followed by John McGill.
Good evening. I lived here in San Carlos for fifteen years. I live in the TL neighborhood, although I'm actually in the Belmont Rebuchor School District. They're great places for everything here in San Carlos. We need great places for schools, parks, trails, housing, and businesses, but they're also bad places. The North Crestview property is a bad place for a new charter school. First of all, undedicating parkland is a bad idea. Here in San Carlos, none of the other parks are currently zoned as parkland. The council should review the general plan and review the zoning of the parks. Please read it. Secondly, there's no public transportation to Crestview, and there's a very big hill, so the children won't be able to walk or bike to school, causing more traffic congestion on Club Drive and others of the streets heading up that hill. Next, in the San Carlos Trails Connection Plan, the second first priority connection included the unimproved city-owned parcel on Crestview across the drive from Vista Park to the San Francisco watershedlands, and your very own Greg Rubens served on this Trails Committee. Next, has anyone in the dais read the City of San Carlos Parks Open Space Buildings and Other Recreational Facilities Master Plan of 2009 to 2029? If you look on page eighty-five in the description for North Crestview, the recommendations include preparing the master plan to determine ultimate uses of this property. Minimum development is an open space area with pathways and benches. Explore the possibility of creation of a trail connection with the adjacent open space. I don't think that's what you're proposing here. The charter school should be built on the Tirolinda campus, where there is already infrastructure, dense housing nearby, where more students live, easier opportunities for future public transportation, walking and biking to school. If not at Tirolinda, consider an east-side location, such as Loryola, where more school facilities are needed. Don't get me wrong, I understand the need for a new middle school and fields and other park facilities. I welcome them in good places in San Carlos. This issue can't be solved without a vote, and I suggest that you select the option two. But I'm also amazed at how fast the council can move on this topic. They've been kicking the can for over a dozen years about traffic in San Carlos Avenue, and this is being wrapped up in a period of a few weeks. I hope that everything's legal. I'd hate for the city of good living to become a laughingstock on the peninsula. Thank you.
John McGill.
McGuire.
McGuire. Pardon me, pardon me. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be, followed by Lenny Roberts.
City Council Mayor, thanks for letting me address you. I was struck by a couple of things sitting in the audience. One is, I'm really, really happy I don't have to do Greg's job of sorting through all these procedures. Sounds very complicated, but I also don't think I'm going to probably convince anybody that's on the other side of this, so I won't spend loads of time. I'm a follower of a couple of Charter, SCLC charter kids, coach soccer and softball and other sports, and a board member in AYSO, and in that position, I've seen the impact that having too few fields really causes us, which is scheduling's incredibly difficult. If we let the school board go ahead with reducing one of the fields in town, it'll mean more challenges scheduling any kind of soccer tournaments and the things that we heard about earlier. So, and we all know that we have a growing population of kids that will be attending our schools, so we're very much for putting this to a vote for the people. We've heard passionate arguments on both sides. Let's let the smart and passionate people of San Carlos decide which way to go with this, and we support the vote. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Lenny Roberts, followed by Karen Molinari. No Lenny Roberts?
She is gone.
She is gone. Okay, well, we'll put her card aside and check at the end. So, Karen Molinari, followed by Adam Rack.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I want to thank you for your service to our city as council members and for the time you've spent listening to, meeting with, and responding to your constituents on this matter, which has generated such great community engagement. I'm here representing the over one thousand three hundred petitioners and supporters of GreatSchoolsAndParks.org. Please continue to act as responsible stewards of our community's resources and maintain that high level of trust that you heard about so much earlier. I'd like to highlight what many have already pointed out, and the survey showed that three of the top six community priorities, number two, reduce traffic congestion, number three, improve schools, number six, add parks and recreation. It's rare for constituents to come to you with solutions rather than complaints, but tonight I tell you, my Irish eyes are smiling because I feel like I have found a pot of gold. I'm delighted to present you with one item that will address those three top priorities, and that is to let the voters decide the future use of this North Crestview site. From what I've heard the opposition mention tonight, I'm just surprised at how they do not recognize a few of the following facts. Yes, you are a city council, and our school district is a separate government entity, but you represent all of us in San Carlos. We are all your constituents. We own our city infrastructure and our school district infrastructure, and we pay from our hard-earned tax dollars to maintain and develop those resources. You're asking me to pull out of my right side to pay my left side, or vice versa, or to move money from my checking account into my savings account. It just doesn't make sense. I'd also like to address the fact that the land swap provides a net reduction of almost three hundred students off the TL campus. By removing charter and the two preschools, you let five hundred students go, and by adding a fourth grade, you add two hundred students. So, that's a net reduction of three hundred in a congested area, on top of removing a hundred students off of the Arundel-Alameda corridor and a hundred students from Heather. So, you've really minimized the idling traffic that exists today. I'd also like to say that the San Carlos School District has made it very clear that new school development should be at least two stories, and of course, it will be. I just want to highlight one thing, as I see my time is up, that the survey mentioned two-thirds, sixty-nine percent, of San Carlos residents indicated they would support paying seventy-five dollars per year to fund priority projects in the city. I do believe that those of us you see here tonight, and I'd like to ask the supporters to stand very quietly, we would support the city in pursuing tax measures to provide further resources for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Adam Rack, followed by Kristin Mitchell. President Rack.
Thank you. Mayor Olbert, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. On behalf of the district and the over three thousand students we serve, thank you. I certainly appreciate today the civil and respectable comments on both sides, and I appreciate the city's willingness to engage in discussion on this important issue. Thank you for your proposal last week and your willingness to engage with us. I personally believe that we can work a deal out, and we responded, and really appreciate the opportunity to have an important dialogue with you to try to come to some conclusion. I hope that we can, as discussed at the recent two-plus-two meeting and in our letter, that we can come together in a joint meeting to try to hammer out some details and really move this process forward. I think it's the best thing for both of us so that we don't continue to go back and forth by letters. Let's talk in person and try to find some solutions. Thank you again for your partnership, and I know we have many things that we work together on, and I hope that regardless of the outcome, we will continue to do that. And I hope that we can come to agreement to help our entire community on expanding school space, working with, to deal with growing traffic, and expanding usable fields. Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. Kristin Mitchell, followed by Gladwin D'Souza.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my neighbor Valerie Keller, who was on the list to speak earlier but had to leave to take care of her daughter, and I'm happy to do so because I agree with her comments. Hi, my name is Valerie Keller, and I live at one hundred, one-twenty Colton Avenue in San Carlos. I'm a twenty-three-year resident of San Carlos, and I have three children. I drove to the Tirolinda campus for fifteen years between the Child Care Center Edison Montessori and the Charter Learning Center. The traffic on Alameda has progressively gotten worse and worse. I live in White Oaks, so theoretically I would be unaffected by this change, but I put myself in the shoes of Heather parents and Carlmont parents who have new drivers. I've also put myself in the shoes of those who live up on the hill near this four-acre site. Obviously, there's going to be change of some sort. Someone is going to be... there's going to be change of some sort. Someone is going to be unhappy regardless of what happens. I encourage the city council to spread the load of traffic across San Carlos. Adding another school to any of the existing campuses is a virtually unworkable solution to the problem of overcrowding. Please move this issue along and allow it to stay alive, to be put to a vote of all the citizens of this fine city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Gladwin D'Souza, followed by Doug Clark.
Please don't kick the congestion can all over the city. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Gladwin D'Souza, speaking as Transportation Chair for the Sierra Club, Loma Prieta Chapter, and a resident of Belmont. We sincerely request that you do not approve the adoption of the resolution as written by the city attorney. The Sierra Club supports development only where transit is active. We feel the traffic problems at Terra Linda with Arundel and Carlmont are all self-inflicted. Transportation planning involves many mutually exclusive decisions, such as locating and sizing schools near transit, whether to devote road space to bike lanes, using time-of-day bus-only lanes, charging for parking at double the rate of taking the bus to school, installing residential permit parking permits, or privileging carpools at the drop-off zone. Transferring 300 cars from the 30,000 on a major arterial is one such mutually exclusive decision. We can articulate a solution to change behavior through the time-honored practice of pricing options and smart drop-off. However, both the school and the city have immense intellectual and planning resources to solve this problem, and there are many admirable consultants in this area, such as cart planning consultants. I would rather reiterate that you please address problems where they occur and not create new ones with over 400 cars in steep, isolated locations. Please don't kick the congestion can into every neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladwin. Doug Clark, followed by Kevin Stattenfeld. Stattenfeld.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for letting us speak tonight. I've been in San Carlos for about 12 years, and my wife's a lifelong peninsula resident, and we have three children in school here. I'm here tonight to put my support behind asking this council to put this to a public vote. I think that's the best way for everybody to have their say in this. I firmly believe, while I know this is a very difficult situation, and there's no easy solutions, I think it's not an ideal solution, but it certainly seems like the best option with the Crestview Park. And I think the key here is getting the dedicated school space for our children and alleviating the traffic. We've heard this a lot tonight. I think, you know, key here is, I'm very much a supporter of open space, and I've seen this plot of land, the four acres, is adjacent to a lot of open space back there that my family enjoys, whether it's on the south side of Edgewood and the Edgewood Hiking, or on the north side by the fire station there. There are hundreds of acres which we really enjoy. This four acres is not connected to that in any way, and I think it would be an ideal site to spread the load that the whole city carries and to have the San Carlos Hills share in some of the load of the city and helping educate our kids. So, I support the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Kevin Stattenfeld. Stattenfield, excuse me, followed by Andrew Taylor.
My name is Kevin Stattenfield, and I'm a San Carlos resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here to voice my support for the disposition of the Crestview site as a future school site to support strong schools, minimize traffic, and an option to increase available field space. A lot of people have discussed some of these similar things, but I think this, it resonates with a lot of people. But San Carlos is the city of good living. A lot of us live here because of the great schools and the great community and the great park and recreational opportunities. This is the reason for the high demand and the consequently high home prices that provide the city tax revenues. Unfortunately, we're somewhat a victim of our successes, and with all these new people moving here or staying here, we've kind of outgrown our capacity at our schools and our parks and our playing fields. And we also have localized traffic issues, particularly around the schools, that drop-off and pickup. And I feel that, and the projection is more and more kids are going to be going into the schools over time. So, I feel that we're at a tipping point right now, where we need to find a way to increase the capacity while still maintaining excellent schools, parks, and field space. As people pointed out, the survey did point out some of the key issues, too. The public were traffic issues, maintaining strong schools, and maintaining parks and adding field space. As you know, San Carlos is about 99% built out, and there's not many large parcels or options to add a new school site. The proposed Crestview site swap with TL possibly combined with other options, I thought is a very creative idea, and it's the best and only solution that I've heard of that addresses these issues. If someone knows of a better option, I think it'd be great to hear from it. Unfortunately, the fallback options are lose, lose, lose. The school district has a loss because they're not able to provide excellent schools. There's going to be a lot of overcrowding. The city is a loss because wherever it goes, there's going to be a loss of field space and a lot more traffic. And so, I strongly urge the city council to work with the school district and vote to support putting this on the ballot and letting the citizens vote for what's important to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Andrew Taylor, followed by Charles Siskman.
Good evening. First of all, I'm at a bit of a loss to even know why we're here discussing this tonight, when three of the city council members at the very first meeting said that until there was a deal, they didn't even want to put this on the ballot. And here we are, there's still no deal, and yet you're moving, still moving forward on a question of putting this on the ballot. I'm going to come at this from a financial angle, given my 30 years in banking, public finance, and real estate. On the logic, the flab logic of the property value argument, I should actually be in favor of putting a school on Crestview, as my home is one of the few that will be actually within walking distance of this school. However, I'm also a taxpayer and against this gift of an outright gift to the school district. I guess my question to the council members is, how many of you understand the concept of net present value? Two. Right. So, you're talking, you're talking a $12.4 million purchase price, no interest, spread over 35 years. A fund manager confirmed to me today that, given the poor finances of the district and the unsecured nature of the transaction, an appropriate discount rate would be a minimum of 7%. Based on a net present value of the annuity stream, what it actually means is that the city is effectively proposing to sell the land to the district at anywhere from 20 to 33 cents on the dollar of the current appraised value, and even lower if you look at the $18 million that they receive from a developer. So, I would ask again, where's the benefit to the city and the taxpayers of San Carlos, a good portion of which don't even have access to San Carlos schools? And then I'd ask a question to some members of the district and the board that are here. The ballot language you put in front of the voters back in November 2012, the explicit question made an explicit reference to using funds on existing sites. Mr. Rosenblatt prepared an FAQ that said, among other things, that you had more than he left land already to build on to do the expansion, and also completely discounted the issue of traffic issues. So, what happened in the last 12 months to the representations and lies you made to the voters? But this is the way the district superintendent in particular likes to operate, looking for something for nothing. $36,000 in personal loans or gifts from his direct report, transferring $1.3 million of taxpayers' funds without legal authority to fund his own private home purchase, self-dealing by set his own interest rate. The number of violations of both law and public ethics is astounding.
Mr. Taylor, I need to ask you to wrap it up, please.
And yet, here he is, looking for another handout.
Thank you, Andrew. Charles Siskman, followed by Stacy Holmes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I am here the third time at these hearings, and there is one issue doesn't really surface here. And I think the city attorney plays a major role in this. The city attorney makes it appear that because the city owns this land in fee, therefore, the city can do anything with it as they wish it. He continuously emphasizes, this is not a dedication. Of course, it is not. No city would take a park site as a dedication. With the dedication, the fee ownership remains with the owner, the former owner. Now, I would like you to read the city attorney's own words. It is in the memorandum which he wrote on April 14 for the April 22 meetings, April 14, 2040. He says, "The conservation element of the 1973 general plan referenced the city's plans for a park in the area as follows. Under the proposed development of the Lincoln Properties land, Roth property, in the northwestern part of the city, not less than eight and one-half acres of land will be dedicated to the city as a condition of approval of the plan. Dedication will resort, dedication will resort from a condition of the sale of the school site number nine as surplus property and the dedication requirements of the plan of development of the PC of the planning community zoning district resolutions." So, it was a requirement of that subdivision by Lincoln Properties Company to give this land to the city. Who paid for this land? We did. The homeowners who bought the property, the units in this property. So, all of those of you who thinks you can take somebody else's property and use it as you wish it, you are mistaken. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Charles. Stacy Holmes, followed by Robert Tomkinson.
Yes, thank you, City Council. And as mentioned, my name is Stacy Holmes. I'm a seven-year resident of San Carlos, have been in the Bay Area since 1979. I do have children in the school system. Right now, what I'd like to do is position why I'm in favor of putting this to ballot. That's the main thing here. We're here to do. We can talk about what's happened in the past, the fact that the school sold to the city, what they're asking for back. That's not what we're here for. We're here for one thing, which is, should this go to ballot? Okay? And it's a difficult situation. I don't think any of us wishes we were here. We wish there were better alternatives, but this is the reality we're faced with. And as I think is evident through these speeches tonight, there's two camps. The Crestview residents are against it. The San Carlos residents of children, that have children of school age, elementary school age, are in favor. Okay? So, and yes, I could lay out my arguments for the land swap, because I am in that camp of kids in the school district. I could talk about traffic. I could talk about how the value of our homes is tied to the integrity and quality of our schools, but it's bigger than me. It's bigger than my colleagues, this issue. It's bigger than the residents up there at Crestview. Okay? And for that reason, this needs to go to a vote. I think what was interesting to see was the presentation on the San Carlos resident survey and the communication and trust, the high mark in communication and trust. And I think not bringing this to ballot, to ballot, would fly in the face of all the marks that the city council has received in the communication and trust area. I think it would be a huge disservice not to let the community make the decision. So, I'm in favor of bringing it to ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Robert Tomkinson, followed by Jessica Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, my name is Robert Tomkinson, 13-year resident of San Carlos. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm British by birth, but American by choice, and I'm very, very proud to call San Carlos my home, the city of good living. And I think we saw a little bit about what it would take to make it a city of great living, and other people have commented on the survey findings about traffic, school fields, and listening to the community. And so, I'm here to speak in favor of putting this to the vote. I have two kids that have been through the San Carlos school system. Indeed, one was collecting her ropes this evening, and I think it's very telling that on a night when so many people were at TL for that, there are so many people here tonight, maybe 10 times more than usual, I think you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. And that says that this is a very difficult and complex issue, and one where I'm sure one side is probably not going to change their minds. And I feel conflicted myself. I love to run the trails of San Carlos and Belmont. I love to mountain bike. I will say, I was not aware of this particular four acres, in spite of using Edgewood, Water Dog, and many of the other parks around here. And therefore, I think to sort of channel my inner Winston Churchill, the option of the land swap may be the least, the worst solution, except for all the others. But while there are a few dozen of us here, just as the gentleman who ran the survey commented, that's still a very small sample of the whole population of San Carlos, and I would urge you to let them all speak and put this to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you for the Winston comment, one of my, one of my heroes. Jessica Welcome, and that's actually the last card I have.
Okay. My name is Jessica Welcome. I've been a resident of San Carlos for over four years, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm going to be very brief, because I think everything has been said. I just want to reiterate, if this parcel is truly our land, as residents of greater San Carlos, we deserve the opportunity to have our voices heard. Please let us vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? All right. Oh, I want to double-check. I think, Bob, you said she left, but is Lenny Roberts around? Okay. Thank you, everybody. And as I have said in prior occasions as well, I very much appreciate everybody honoring the two-minute period of time, and that helps speed things along. Not that speed is of the essence here, but it's important to hear all the voices that we can. So, I very much appreciate that. Matt, I know you said you had some questions you wanted to ask. I actually have one or two additional questions. I suspect other people do as well, but would you like to lead off?
Sure. First question I have for the city attorney is, there seems to be a lot of commentary that this is about a land swap. That's what we're putting on the ballot. Is that what we're putting on the ballot?
No. The resolution of intention before you tonight starts the process for allowing the voters to decide whether the park use should be discontinued and abandoned for the, for the North Crestview Park site. It's not specifically about a land swap or a particular transaction.
So, if we put it on the ballot and it comes across that the citizens are okay with abandoning it as a park, the council still has the option to, we could be doing something with the school district, or we could be doing something with the developer.
Under that hypothetical, that's true, because the, under the code section, the, if the voters approve the, of the proposition to abandon and dispose of the park use, then the city is deemed to own the property in fee without that park restriction, and the city council is mandated by the code at that point after the election to pass an ordinance that, that says just that disposal, excuse me, abandonment of the park use.
So, after, you said, if it went that way, we would have to actually do some type of resolution, you said?
An ordinance.
An ordinance. That would...
The word shall is, is in the code for what happens if the, if the election proposition passes.
Okay. And the only way that... And the only way that would change is if we did, I suppose it would still be a non-binding recommendation, or I forget the term that was used, something that would be in tandem with this ballot?
The, what would happen is that you, you could do a couple of things I was talking about before. One is, in the initial ordinance setting the election, you could set forth findings of your intention of what you're intending to do, but the ballot language has to be very simple, in my opinion. The second is, you could put an advisory measure on the same ballot, which would be non-binding, but it could express your intention as a council, what you would do if the measure passed. And the third choice would be if there was an agreement that was entered into before the election, you could potentially put that out there as of, and agendize that and publicize that decision so that contingent on the election, you might have an agreement. And then I think there's one, and then we talked about before having a, if there was an intention on the council to participate in the arguments in favor or against, the council could then, could vote to have the council take a position in those ballot arguments.
And all of those other options, other than putting it on the ballot, simply take a majority vote of the council?
Yeah, actually, the ordinance, the ordinances that I talked about require a majority vote, but to overrule the protest takes the four votes.
Right. Okay. If the park is chosen to be eliminated in any of those steps, how do we go about doing the general plan? Doesn't that have to change as well?
The, that depends on how the, and to whom the property is transferred or sold to. The, if it's the school district, the school district has, does not have to follow our zoning requirements. So if there's a sale to the school district, it's my belief that they could override our current zoning and general plan requirements. If the, if it's sold to a developer, general plan would definitely have to be amended. And then the triggering event under the, let me just step back for a minute. And I said this at the earlier meeting, this is just one step, the elimination of the park use in a process. There's a lot of other steps that would have to take place. There would have to be, like you mentioned, the general plan and the zoning change potentially, but there's also SEQA review of the transaction, if there was a proposed sale. That would be when, when the voters decided on that and the council passes that ordinance, that's when we'd have to evaluate the SEQA review that would be required for this.
But still, our general plan does reference the amount of park land we have, does it not? So wouldn't we have to change the general plan if we were going to eliminate it as a park, be it to give it to the school in some fashion or another, or to have a developer take it over? It still is no longer park space, no longer open space?
And I've said, we will have to address the general plan. This is one step in the process. We will have to.
So we would.
We'll have to address that issue depending on who the purchaser is. If it's a school district--
You're confusing me. If the school district, if we sold it to the school district, you're saying we don't have to change the general plan? I question that because it's no longer park space. Our general plan references park space and the amount that we have. So why do we not change the general plan?
I think, I think what the city attorney is saying is likely you should change the general plan in either event. However, it's not going to be required to change the general plan for a school to be built there because the school district can override and exempt itself from the city's general plan and zoning requirements. So you could reach it, if the voters were to pass, if this--
I think we're talking past each other, though, because our general plan also talks about the amount of park space that we will provide to the public, and we've eliminated four acres of park space that we offer to the public per our general plan if it becomes a school site.
And that's why I think my recommendation to the council would be that you would still amend the general plan. It's just that that amendment doesn't preclude the ability for the school district to build a school there.
Do we, given how this park site came about, I'm looking at the density of the development that was done with all the housing, and to me, there's two ways to change the density of that site. One, you could say, take away four acres of open space. Another is, you could say, if you want to build these buildings bigger, taller, use your existing tennis courts or swimming pools, or whatever you've got up there, to build additional housing. Is that possible for us to do?
Well, if I understand your question, Councilmember Grokot, the, right now, the current zoning was changed in 2011, so we have zoning that allows for the certain densities that are there. There is some flexibility to change what could be built or up there, what additions could be done, but the city still has discretion to approve any types of changes that you suggested, or deny those types of changes.
Currently, the zoning matches what's there.
That's right.
So is there no lock-in to, that was a planned unit development, was it not? And there was an agreement, and the whole court case and everything, so that's not fixed? You're saying that's not fixed?
I don't think it's fixed because it wasn't a development agreement. It was a planned unit development or PZ zoning that went into play. That was a council legislative act that occurred back then to set those development standards. Right now, we have a different zoning that was, the zoning was changed in 2011 all over the whole city as a result of the general plan amendment from 2010. So that's the exact same zoning change that put the park zoning on this, on the North Crestview Park Site and Vista Park, and many other parks in the city actually did not have a specific park designation on them. So that all changed as part of the 2010 general plan amendments, which were then, you might recall, the comprehensive zoning change that we did to our zoning ordinance after the general plan, that was all incorporated into that.
But when we did that, the zoning that we did matches what's there now. It's not higher, we didn't, we didn't take that area and say, we're going to make it higher density than exists now.
We, we didn't, that might be a comment for the planning director, but I don't believe that we, we basically incorporated what was there, but the terminology might be different. We didn't word-for-word enact the old ordinance, zoning ordinance, and incorporate it.
But in terms of density, it matches. Does Mr. Savay want to say anything about that?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Yes, that's correct. So the zoning matches the density, and the general plan matches the density of what's built. So to change the density, you would need to change the zoning. To increase the density, you would need to change the zoning and the general plan to allow for that to occur. So it'd be another legislative act to do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Just a couple more questions here, I think. Quimby Act, do we submit ourselves to that? Do we require, when we have developments, for fees to be paid for parking luffies to purchase land or improve existing park sites and facilities?
I believe that's true.
We do. So we're, we, when the state passed the Quimby Act, we chose to be one of those bodies that implemented it.
I don't know for 100% certain, but I believe we do because we have ordinances that collect luffies for parks.
And not for the operation of the park, but for either new parkland or improve existing facilities?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. And the last question I have is, and I guess this could be for the city attorney or anybody on city staff, is we're being asked to spend money on an election, and do I understand this correct? We're also being asked to spend money on a SEQA review, an EIR, and a traffic study?
Well, I think I can answer that question.
Relative to the North Crestview site?
Well, I think the first one, the election, yes, the city would be, that would be paying for the election.
How much is that, by the way?
It's, the city clerk's investigation was that it'd be $32,000 to consolidate it with the November election.
Okay.
The other two, I think, are yet to be determined, who pays for the general plan amendments that might be required. It's going to depend on our negotiations, frankly.
So you use some different terms than I did. I said, the election, the EIR, the traffic study, and SEQA review. A SEQA and EIR are one and the same, or no? And then you mentioned the general plan update.
The SEQA, and they're not synonymous because EIR is one possible environmental document that might be required. But again, I think the general plan amendment that might be required and the SEQA review, those are, it's not clear at this point in time who would be paying for that. That might, that's something that could be subject to negotiation.
And also a traffic study?
Yes, that too.
Okay.
But that might depend on the timing. So, I mean, it's possible the city may have to pay for a traffic study.
Why? Because we still would be in possession of the land?
If we would want to have that before the next decision point, for instance, if you wanted to have that in advance.
Okay. And then, last question for now, is, do we know, has the school done a site study to determine how much infrastructure they can put on that site?
I think that might be a question for the district because I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, I had a couple of questions sparked by public comment.
Just a couple of quick ones. So, Mr. Rubens, let's assume we had an election and it passed, so now it comes back to the City Council. Let's say there's no advisory things on, it just comes back. Now it's a fresh, we're five people and we can do what we want with the property.
You'd be, you're compelled by law to enact an ordinance that frees the property from the park use.
Right. So let's assume that the school district we couldn't agree with, we couldn't find a developer, and Mr. Jones died and left us $10 million to improve parks. And we go, you know what? Let's make a park out of it.
Out of North Crestview?
Yep. Can we do that?
You would own it in free, in fee at that point, and there would be no restriction on putting it back into park use.
Okay. Just want to ask the question. So just because something passes in an election doesn't mean, and of course, there's a lot of assumptions there, and there are no advisories, and there is no deal ahead of time, and I don't know whether it would or wouldn't be, it could come back and still end up to be a park. I mean, that's a long shot, but I, in other words, it gives us free rein to do what we want with the property.
That's right.
Okay. The other question is, let's assume that the election doesn't happen. Can the citizenry set up a referendum or an initiative to vote on that property to, to set up and say, we want it to be this, or just we want it to be disposed of? Or just as your term, not mine?
Well, I don't think so because the statutory scheme, this is the method by which you abandon a park. What the, what an initiative could potentially do would be to change the zoning or the general plan designation.
Okay. So, but it, okay, so it wouldn't necessarily come back to, in other words, the initiative couldn't give us that free rein again because we're not, we didn't follow a certain code. You have to do it this way to have that free, free and clear type rein.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I just had a couple of quick ones. Greg, the, if we, if the council opts to move forward with the registering intent tonight and directing staff to schedule a public hearing on objections to decommissioning the park, there are ongoing discussions and negotiations with the, with the school district. If those don't come to fruition before the public hearing is scheduled, or would be scheduled, your June 30th date, can, are we required to hold the hearing? I mean, or do we just, can we just let it lapse, or what?
You know, it'd be, it, you would have to, I think you would have to, because you noticed it, I think you'd have to put it on, but at that meeting, you could, the council could vote to not conduct the hearing and stop the process.
I see. And I presume that would be a major, a simple majority vote.
That's correct.
And the other, just a quick question for my own edification. Matt was asking questions about basically our inventory of park space in the community. Are the school districts' fields which are, which they allow the public to use outside of school hours, are those part of what we consider our park inventory for general plan
We're not sure. We can, we can look at it, but there probably is some reference to the availability of that land, but I'm not sure if the way, exactly how you said it, they're set up.
Okay. That, I don't need an answer right now, but I would like an answer at some point. So staff can get back to me on that. All right. Questions, public comments? Before we have discussions, since this is an action item, we have to see if there's anybody who's willing to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution 2014 dash--
Fifty-three.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos declaring that the public interest and convenience requires a discontinuance of the use of the real property located at 336-364 Crestview Drive, commonly known as North Crestview Park or the North Crestview Park Site, consisting of approximately four acres as a public park, and the intent to call a special election on its discontinuance and setting of a protest hearing.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second discussion. Anybody wish to make comment?
I'll speak in favor of my motion. So I'll, first of all, I want to thank everyone for all of their public comment and the respectful nature in which it was conducted, and, you know, everyone's insightful comments. I want to make it clear that this motion and this vote, if we approve it tonight, does not put this on the ballot. What we're doing is voting to take another step in the process, and it still requires a supermajority vote at a protest hearing in several weeks. So, so why do I want to move forward in the process? So, you know, to reiterate some of the things that I've said at previous meetings, I think that, you know, we, as the city and as the voters, as the residents, have a strong interest in having as high-quality public education as possible, I think for two reasons. One is, it's a moral issue. I'm a parent, I have two small children, and I want to make sure that my kids and all kids get the best public education that they can get. But then, secondly, for our town, I think the reputation of our schools is a big draw to the city. A lot of residents have talked about it. It was true for me, and it's, it's true for many people that I know. And it brings, it not only brings people, but it brings people who are invested in the community, they're invested in their kids, they contribute to the community, and I think that's what's, that's part of what continues to make San Carlos such a special place. So really, the issue here then is, you know, we have an expanding school population, the school district is desiring to expand the schools and wants a place to put charter. As I've said at previous meetings, you know, I look at it and I say, well, the school district certainly wants to put it at North Crestview. Is North Crestview a suitable site? I think it is. Is it ideal? I think it's not ideal, and I'm certainly sensitive to concerns about traffic and noise and the loss of open space. But that being said, I do think it is better than the alternatives, having had a lot of conversation with folks. You know, I've reached that conclusion. I have raised concerns about a, the first proposal that was put forth, which was a zero-dollar land swap. I didn't think that that was a good deal. I, I've raised serious concerns about the idea of taking ownership of the backside of Tierra Linda where there's no direct access, other than transiting through the school, and I thought that that was really problematic, and I haven't seen a resolution of that issue. So I continue to see that as a-- of that issue, so I continue to see that as a major problem. But I've proposed a lease, you know, we've, we've now made an offer for a sale, I think there's other potential creative solutions. What I would like to see is an opportunity for the school district and the city to continue conversations in the hopes that we can reach a deal, and so that's why I think we should move forward with the process. If we, if we decide to stop tonight, that's essentially the end, and I think there's a, there's definitely a reasonable chance that we can find a good deal, and I, and I hope, I hope we do. So, with that, I'll send back my time.
Ron?
Thank you, Cameron. I, I agree with a lot of Cameron's comments, and because of those comments, my comments will be shorter. But I too like to thank everybody for all your, your emails, your phone calls, your comments tonight. If I didn't respond to you, I apologize, but when you get 10 in an hour, it's a little difficult to respond. But I got them on both sides, a lot of people made some wonderful comments, some very pointed comments, very good points on both sides. But to me, this really is, this, this comes down to a question of democracy. We're always trying to find a balance up here, and I'm not sure there is one. There's going to be one side that's going to be mad, and, and I know I'm probably going to pay the price for it, but I always said that I was always going to try to do the right thing, what I think is the right thing, and not until after I've heard a lot of people. Well, about 39 people spoke tonight, and probably that many in previous hearings, and those comments and the emails and the phone calls do have an impact, a lot of people raised some things that I had not thought of, and I really do appreciate that. That's why I ran, this is direct democracy, and unfortunately, probably the only example of it in this country. But it comes down to me to the future of our town, and this is, it's not an easy decision. But there's an undeniable fact that the school age population is growing. People have said, well, school age popul, or school populations rise and fall. Yes, they do. They rose in the 50s, they declined in the 60s. We closed schools, we sold land, because the school age population was decreasing, or declining. And guess what? It came back. That's what happens, and we need to have the capacity available to handle those swings in population. We're already beyond capacity. But we, as council members, were elected to represent the interests of everyone in this town, and they trusted us enough to elect us. And that survey today, or tonight, said that people tend to trust the city. Well, I think too many people want the opportunity to vote on this, it's just, one speaker said, it's just, it's too big, and I'm, you know, I'm reminded of a proposed declaration of an emergency that we had five years ago to put a, a tax on the ballot, and it took a 5-0 vote of the council, and it didn't make the ballot. And my point at the time was, you have to trust the people enough to let them vote. And who knows, that tax may have failed, but we guaranteed its failure by not allowing the vote. I don't know how this vote's going to turn out. But I think people do have the right to vote. We need, as a council, to trust the people that elected us to make the right decision for the city, and I'm, I'm willing to do that. As I said, it's, it's a process that, to me, comes down to not wanting to short-circuit democracy.
Thank you, Ron. Matt, or Bob?
I'll go.
All right. Well, I'm going to start out with the fact that originally, when this first came up, I thought it might be a good idea, because my impetus for it was, you know, everybody knows we need more field space. And I thought, if we could do some kind of deal that would get more field space, then I could see it as a possible benefit. Going through the negotiations that we did last week, it's pretty obvious to me that we're not going to end up with more field space, because there's not enough being put into it to allow that to happen. And while I was the one that mentioned about having something else in the deal regarding the usage of the North Crest View site and the fields at North Crest View, if they ever came to pass, now I'm not convinced that we would even end up with fields at North Crest View that would be sufficient for soccer use or baseball, because the contours of the land, and, and the requirements for a 400-student-body campus, I don't think you'll end up with field space sufficient for our uses as a city. That's why I asked if the district, have you done any site plans? Have you done any site studies? I don't see any skin in the game here at all. What I see is the city spending money for an election, possibly spending money for SEQA, and changing our general plan, and so on and so forth, and I see the school district wanting something for nothing. And given their history, and I think people should know this history, I, I've heard a couple people say, well, it's not important. It is important. How agencies that you elect have acted in the past are important. This council has always had a tradition, up until recently, until we sold the land out there where you see the In-N-Out Burger, this council, over the years, had never sold a piece of land that the city owned, and that was by design. In that regard, we've been very conservative. The school district, on the other hand, used to own land over by the L'Oreola neighborhood, and they sold it, and there's houses there today. The school district used to own land on La Mesa, and I know people who moved into that neighborhood on La Mesa and bought their brand-new home there expecting a school across the street. It never happened. The school district looked at the gold coin, and they took the gold coin. The school district, as it's been said tonight, used to own the land at North Crest, that's now North Crestview Park, and they sold it for the gold coin. So, some poor decisions were made, and now they're coming to us as a city and saying, solve our problem. I feel like I'm dealing with a dysfunctional cousin right now. On the other side of things, when the property, properties up on Crest View and Club Drive were developed, as was said, there was contention. And the agreement that came up, came out of that, was the creation of Vista Park and North Crestview Park. And those properties were developed to a certain density. Now, to me, doing what we're talking about doing, and developing that park site, would be the same thing as you taking your 20-foot setback that's required on your property for your single-family home, and after that's all set up, and you've done your, maybe you've done an addition, and you've built right up to the 20-foot setback, going to your neighbor and saying, hey, how would you like to buy the 10 feet of my backyard? So that you can make your house a little bigger and so forth. It wouldn't be allowed, that's my point, and I don't think this should be allowed, which is why it shouldn't go to the ballot at all. The, the one lady mentioned, she said, that's the, the bottom-line question, should this go to the ballot? And she talked about trust. Well, believe you me, the people who bought there, in those condos and that housing development, they trusted that that was going to remain open space. They trusted that the density that they have in their neighborhood would be there for years to come. And now we're talking about changing it. You talk about democracy, you want a definition for democracy? Democracy is two wolves and a sheep deciding what to have for lunch. That's why we're a republic, because we respect law, and we respect things that have been put in place, and people trust in that, and they buy their property according to that. A lot of you have talked about, well, I bought into San Carlos because of the schools. You know what? Schools can change overnight, school boards can change overnight. Property and property rights are not supposed to. And those people that bought up there in that neighborhood, they had expectations, just like you did, when you moved here, and you expected something out of the school district. They expected their open space and their neighborhood to be as it is. And that's why I don't even think this should go to the ballot. I'm going to make one more point, there's been, I got a email today from Nakia, who works outside Jeff's office, asking if I would give up a morning on Wednesday to meet, and have a five-on-five with the school district. I'm telling you, I will not meet in any more closed sessions on this topic, because closed sessions are when you're having property negotiations, and there's a threat of somebody else changing the price of that property. This is between two agencies, everybody knows what's going on, and everybody should know what's going on, and we shouldn't have any meetings that are happening during the day, when people are at work, and they can't attend the meetings, and closed session just adds insult to injury, in my, in, in my opinion. So I will not attend any meetings that happen during the day, or are closed session on this topic in the future. Thank you.
So, folks, please.
It's, it's, it's a no-win situation for, as was mentioned earlier, for ourselves and for the school board. The school board has the same difficulty in this situation as we do, in a lot of ways. No one wants to impact children, no one wants to impact property rights, as was mentioned. Mr. Collins mentioned, no matter what happens, somebody's going to be upset with this. We were elected to make decisions as best we can. It's difficult always to decide what items go to the ballot, what items don't go to the ballot. Is there a dollar amount? Is there a niche, is there, is it, is it an issue? Is it a personal issue? It's so difficult on what can or can't go. I've, I've voted for things to go to the ballot, they haven't. I voted against things that go to the ballot, and they have. It's been a, my ninth year, you end up with a lot of different decisions. I voted up here in public to, I thought we should sell the property, because I think we need to get some value for it. I supported a situation where we offered the school district an opportunity, which, quite honestly, if anyone ever offered it to me, I'd go to every person I ever knew to borrow the money to do, but they decided, for whatever reason, and certainly they have the right to do that, for whatever reason, economic or whatever, that they couldn't do it, they felt they couldn't do it. We're going to be working with the school, we'd work with the school district every day, we're going to be working with them tomorrow, no matter how this vote goes tonight, and no matter how the vote goes, if this goes on, June 30th. I want to make sure that everybody understands, at least from this council member, is that, I understand, as I said earlier, that it's a very difficult vote on both, on all sides. So I don't, I don't hold the school district one way or the other, I put them on the same path as we are, with a lot of difficulty. But having said all that, when I, when I, when I wanted to do a sale, I can't see where we're going with this. Apparently, there isn't the funds in the school district to, to buy anything, it's just a trade. The city would lo, I would love to have more fields, but if we get a piece of property over here, there's, there's still no money to develop that field. So are we trading this for that? Is it eggs for, for chickens? Is it apples for oranges? Again, people can discuss that till the cows come home, of whether it's a fair trade, whether it isn't, what its value is, what its value isn't. I will say that, that, as speakers have said, the property values in this city have gone in a, in an upward direction, certainly since the recession ended. So anything, anybody that has a home knows that it's worth more today than it was yesterday. That includes raw land. So, it's always hard to figure out the values at any point in time. I can't support this tonight, however, I am not closing the door on having a meeting, and having another discussion. Maybe, as some gentleman said, there's some answer to this. I, I can't see it. I don't necessarily want to spin my wheels, but on the other hand, I feel like I should at least participate in anything that we have. So, it's going to be, it's a difficult vote for me, but I won't be supporting this issue tonight.
Where to start? Couple of points I want to make. It's very easy, some of the comments I've heard here, just in the last few minutes, it's very easy, as you see demonstrated here, for organizations and for people, individuals, to fall into an us-versus-them mentality. Zero-sum thinking, my gain is your loss, your loss is my gain. It actually is an appropriate way of looking at some situations. In my experience, in my life, it's a surprisingly small number of situations that it makes sense to look at that way. And there's this terrible, terrible lurking danger in adopting that attitude too freely, where you end up becoming a prisoner of the past, and you can't build the future. I used to tell people, back when the conflict was raging in Bosnia, Herzegovina, one of the things that I thought was utterly confusing, I read, read this in some news reports, there are certain times of the year in some, in bars in that area, you can cause fights to break out based on what happened in 1275 A.D. 700-plus years in the past. That's what happens when you get stuck in an us-versus-them mentality. It's always tit-for-tat, there's always something else that, that, that you have to get paid back for. It's a trap, it's foolish, it's a really dumb way to make public policy, in almost all situations. I want to build for the future, I want to build for the whole community. I, from the day I decided to first run for elected office on the school board back in 2001, one of the things that I held most dear is, I really do trust the people. That's not to say that I think the people always make the right decision in every circumstance. I know I make mistakes, and so I presume that, in aggregate, we collectively make mistakes on occasion. But I trust people, I trust the community, I particularly trust San Carlos. I've seen time and time again that, that they will do the reasonable thing when they have an opportunity to, to address the issue. And so for me, what this really ultimately boils down to is, let the public vote on how best to utilize public land. It's public land, it's nothing magic about it, it's an asset owned by the public, it's not even owned by the city or the school district in that sense. Let the people vote on it. That's, to me, the right way to go, that's why I'm going to be supporting this measure tonight. I do take seriously the comments and concerns, not, not all of them, because I think some of them are exaggerations, for effect, I know I do that too, so, when I'm making points of my own, so that's, that's understandable. I do think there are some legitimate concerns that people have raised on both sides of the issue. As I said at an earlier meeting, what I think we should be doing on the way to building the future, is working to solve those problems, to mitigate them. That's what we do, that's actually what this council does, and the city staff does, pretty darn well. It's often an ugly process and a messy process, but at the end of the day, I think it actually works pretty well. That's where we should be spending our efforts. But for now, let's take the next step on the road, whether we actually get to the end of this particular road, who knows, but let's not shut the door on the future at this point. So with that, I think I'm going to ask that we call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Gokut?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. With that, we actually are almost at 10:30, so we have a bit of additional work to do, I'll give people an opportunity to clear the room, if you'd like to go home to your lives. Thank you very much for showing up and sharing your, your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion to extend the meeting?
And we do need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll make a motion, we extend the meeting till 11 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Jeff? A quick question, and, and, well, actually, first let me ask my, my colleagues. It occurs to me, in the interest of, the next item is actually fairly lengthy as well, do we need to deal with 9B tonight?
Well, we don't necessarily need to do it, but it is an issue related to public safety, and my understanding is, this ordinance, this change will take effect, is it immediately upon? Oh, okay. Not urgent.
So we could continue it, if it was the pleasure of the council to do so, okay.
That's correct.
So gentlemen, I'll just ask you to keep that in mind, if this item starts running long, we can consider truncating 9B. Al, good evening. I know you've been waiting for hours to address us, and here's your chance.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'll make a brief presentation, and then some introductions, and this is the landmark And this is the landmark site, as you know, and the parcels that we're discussing tonight are 595 Industrial, 850 East San Carlos, and 810. So this makes up the properties that the city is interested in developing on for a hotel. As you know, however, the landmark site itself is a little bit larger with these extra two parcels, so there's five parcels in total. And Landmark Site has been, for many years, considered prime location for regional-serving, commercial, and hospitality uses, which would contribute to the city's financial stability and implement our economic development plan. Hotel development on the Landmark Site has long been sought by the city as a means to increase the general fund revenues, and it would also be a significant benefit for employment growth and contribute, again, to our economic sustainability. A new hotel would also be an amenity for our local businesses and the folks that want to have their families stay there or to host out-of-town guests. Conservatively, a hotel of 200 rooms would generate $1 million-plus for the city's general fund annually. And assembling these properties presents an opportunity for the city to realize its land use goals and development goals for this area. Now, in terms of the process that we went through, we started with, we went to the City Council. The City Council approved a request for proposals to send out to the development marketplace. We sent an RFP to 23 known developers throughout the country. We received six proposals. And in the objectives that you see there, that was part of the RFP, which was approved by the council back in January. An additional consideration, issues for consideration are A through C below, were part of the discussion surrounding the developer selection. A selection team was then put together. The selection team consisted of the City Council Economic Development Subcommittee, which was Mayor Olbert and Vice Mayor Collins. We also had Economic Development Committee member John Seiling, City Manager Jeff Malpe, myself, and Lisa Costa-Sanders, and Jim Simon from RSG was also in attendance. The interviews were approximately an hour apiece, and there were a number of key issues and topics that were discussed with each candidate. And all the top-tier candidates were very well experienced and capable of developing a good project for the city of San Carlos. The selection committee is recommending R.D. Olson as the hotel developer for the Landmark Site. And it's also recommended that the City Council direct staff to negotiate the terms of an MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, with R.D. Olson, to develop a hotel and landmark site, and then for them to acquire the site from the city after we issue permits. The details of the R.D. Olson proposal are shown in the table that you can't read on the screen, but is contained in your staff report there. And before I conclude the presentation, I'd like to mention that we do have a number of representatives here to speak with you, if needed, tonight, from R.D. Olson. We have Robert D. Olson, President and CEO of R.D. Olson. We have Dustin Schmidt, Vice President of Real Estate Acquisitions, Adam Nicholas, Development Associate, Robert Sanger with Marriott, and Corey Creath, who is the project architect. We also have Jim Simon of RSG and myself to assist in answering questions. And that concludes the presentation. Again, we're available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Al. Questions for staff and other experts? Cameron.
So, Al, what was the second-best alternative, and what were the key factors that made you choose R.D. Olson over them?
You mean, in terms of the three top candidates? Like, who was the second-best? I would say what we've noted in the report was OTO Development, another very experienced hotel firm. And I think the things that set R.D. Olson's proposal apart, and the interview process itself, is, one, they aren't asking for assistance, financial assistance, from the city. In terms of recovering the TOT over years, I mean, it may take years and years to recover TOT taxes when you assist another hotel developer, so that set them apart. In terms of the scale of the project, it's lower project, four stories is being proposed by R.D. Olson, whereas the other proposals, while they had more rooms, they had more development intensity, so they were much more, greater intensity. In terms of track record of quality projects, the selection committee and also city staff was very impressed by the quality of the work that R.D. Olson has done in the hotels that they have developed. And they've won some awards very recently that they could probably tell you about. So that was impressive. And also, their outreach and their hands-on community engagement, I think, was another key factor. And they told us some stories about, in other cities that they've done hotels in, where they reached out to engage the community and bring consensus to the project. So we were all impressed by those things. So, again, the second-best would be OTO Development, again, very experienced development firm. We know them very well, and they're doing a lot of work in the Bay Area.
If I may interject, just to follow up on, I agree with everything that Al just said, at least from the perspective of having sat in on the Subcommittee. Ron, you may want to add your thoughts. I actually placed R.D. Olson first, personally, of the three. I would also say that, at my recollection, was the spread between the three was pretty small. Okay? You know, it wasn't like they're, and that's, I'm not trying to damn anybody with faint praise, because it was more the opposite. Everybody was very good, very strong. They just were a little bit different, as Al was talking about.
Yeah, and I would agree. With apologies to R.D. Olson, they were second, but only by a vote. It almost came down to a coin flip.
You don't get a discounted room.
I was just thinking the same thing.
One additional question. So is it safe to say that we're looking at a Marriott?
Yes.
And maybe for the Marriott representative, maybe you know, Al, where are there other Marriots in the Bay Area or on the peninsula, and how does that factor into our decision-making process?
Well, perhaps we can have Robert Sanger talk about that. So, I know Mr. Sanger is here.
Sure.
Good evening, gentlemen. Robert Sanger, I'm the area Vice President of Lodging Development. I'm based in Roseville, but we're headquartered in Bethesda, Maryland. We selected the Residence Inn for this location based on our knowledge of the markets up and down the 101 corridor. The nearest Marriotts we have are the Courtyard and Residence Inn in Foster City to the north, and then the Full Service Marriott in San Mateo. And we also have Residence Inns and Courtyards just to the south in Sunnyvale, North San Jose, Santa Clara. So we have a number of hotels between downtown San Francisco and downtown San Jose. But given the number of hotels that we operate for our owners, our market knowledge tells us that Residence Inn is the right product for this market. It's upscale, all-suite, extended-stay property. It caters to the long-term guests that are here on a weekly basis. These are white-collar professionals, whether they're project consultants, defense contractors, visiting professors, visiting physicians, or the white-collar executive that's relocating to the area. So we thought that the 200 rooms for Residence Inn was the sweet spot for this location and for this market.
And one quick follow-up question, and it'll be my last. What percentage of your Marriott customers are loyal to the brand? And how does it factor in the fact that there are lots of Marriots up and down the peninsula?
There are a lot of Marriots, but in general, for the Residence Inn brand, the Marriott Rewards guest, which is probably the strongest guest loyalty program in the hotel industry, represents about 60% of the paid-room nights, on average, for the Marriott system, particularly higher for the Residence Inn brand.
And are your other properties up and down the peninsula at capacity right now?
Yes. If you, you'll find that our hotels are, in general, considered to be the market leaders in their competitive sets.
All right. Thanks.
Other questions? Bob?
Mr. Seve, thank you, Mr. Sanger.
Thank you.
Mr. Seve, the last screen, or last thing on our worksheet says, "Next steps." What do you anticipate the timeline is for this, from 1 to 4?
In terms of timeline, what we'd like to do, and what we're asking for this evening, is to get into position to negotiate a Memorandum of Understanding-
Right.
-with them very quickly. So, in terms of the timeline, I'm sorry, I'm looking up the timeline here. I think we're, you know, I mean, it depends on the steps. So, R.D. Olson, again, the Memorandum of Understanding, engage the greater east San Carlos, prepare an environmental document, that's probably going to take the longest.
Right.
So maybe six to nine months for that. I'd say we're about a year away from entitlements or issuing building permits.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, about a year away. And we can move pretty quickly in terms of city staff. I think part of it is, again, going to be, you know, the public meetings that we're going to need to do and the environmental documentation.
Right. I know the process, just about a year. Mr. Olson, could I ask you a quick question? Thank you very much, by the way, you and your staff and the folks at Marriott for staying all this time. Heard of your company. In fact, you were folks that wanted to bid on, in fact, you did bid on, or I think we interviewed you for the, weren't they for the Wheeler Plaza? Didn't you folks have a project come up from Wheeler Plaza?
No.
No?
No.
Well, then I have a terrible memory. Never mind. But that's-
We're still a really good company, I will say.
Yeah. One quick question. So assuming that we issue the permits in a year or a year and a half, what's the timeline after we issue, the day we issue the permit, when do you buy the property?
We'll buy the property right there.
The next day?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not tying you-
Well, we'll close with permits.
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days.
30 days, okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to ask you the question. I'm not familiar with the hotel industry in that, you know, when you see a Marriott, you think, well, Marriott owns it, but in most cases, I guess, or in many cases, someone else owns it and the Marriott folks manage it and so on. So there's other agreements, I guess, that have to come in. Does the city get involved in the management of the hotel? In other words, we certainly make a development agreement with Mr. Olson, with certain things that we put in, and then it's built? And then, do we have any input on when the management team comes in, on how it's run or anything like that?
We do have, Jeff, we do have some input on the flag parameters, right?
Right.
Flag parameters?
Some input that I would presume would be covered within the MOU development that the council would have to approve.
Okay.
But for the most part, no.
Okay. I just, again, just trying to understand the concept. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ron?
I don't know who this question is for, but I just, I want to find out on the design, and I'm not trying to micromanage it, but as I think a lot of people here know, we have a great need in this town for banquet space, meeting room space. I would like to urge you to build as much in as possible. We've got Kiwanis Clubs, Lions, Rotary, all those clubs meet weekly. They really need an ongoing facility to have their meetings, plus, there's a lot of other functions that we, as a city, would like to have and a lot of organizations would like to have. So, I don't know, 1,500 feet, which is listed in here as your meeting room space, some of the others mention, like, three meeting rooms. I don't even know what that, how that equates to 1,500 feet. But whatever you do in the design process, really like to see meeting room and banquet room capability built in, because it will be heavily used. Thanks.
I didn't hear a question in there.
No, it's kind of a comment.
It's okay.
Suggestion.
Any, I had a couple of questions. Al, you touched on this briefly in answering Bob's question, but I just want to make sure I understand, what are the various contracts that the city will be negotiating and entering into between tonight and ribbon-cutting?
Well, I mean, the initial one would be a Memorandum of Understanding, which would lay out the terms in agreement between the city so that there would be performance on both sides. So we agree on the terms of performance and when things are supposed to happen, who does what, when. It would also talk about, at the issuance of permits, then the property would be acquired by the developer. It could also include some understanding about meeting space and the desire for meeting space, and at some point, we might want to talk about that, and if there needs to be more, and how that works with the development project. So I think that would be it, in terms of Memorandum of Understanding. And then there would be a development agreement that comes later. And that solidifies everything that you would put in the development, in the zoning for the site, and the height, the setbacks, the quality of architecture, and it would incorporate also everything that was in the MOU. So it's sort of a final document. The understanding says, hey, we're going to negotiate the final agreement, the development and disposition agreement is the final contract between the city and the developer. So those are essentially the contractual sort of arrangements. There's some other steps in there. There's a question?
Basically two, MOU and-
Those are the basic two. Contractual agreements, yes.
Okay.
Just to add, that's related to the hotel. We still have some contractual obligations related to the property acquisition that will be coming before the council.
Grant, right.
Yeah.
It's necessary, but not actually part of the development package, per se. Got it. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain-
I apologize, I think you probably should ask anybody who wants to speak on it.
Nope, you're absolutely right. Thank you. Keep forgetting that.
That's right.
I don't have any speaker cards here, but does anybody wish to address the council on this item? Sorry. No, 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 not at all. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Bob Black, again. Have we considered the possibility of a long-term lease of the property rather than outright sale? And what are the advantages to the city and the disadvantages to the city? The advantages to the developer and disadvantages to the developer? It's just a question. Thank you.
You're welcome, Bob. Actually, that topic did come up, at least during the Subcommittee discussions, and, as I recall, it creates some significant problems for the developer, so much so that my takeaway, Ron, I mean, Ron, you add to this if you have a different view. My sense was that all three of the developers were like, we're not sure we would bid on this, if that's the structure.
No, it was a deal killer.
So, any other, anybody else wish to address the council?
If not, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve R.D. Olson to negotiate, starting to go, well, I don't know what the exact term is, Mr. Rubens. Is there wording in there? I didn't see.
Yeah. 9A.
9A. It's on the sheet. Here. Here you go.
Oh, I have to read this sheet? Oh, okay. I have glasses this time, though. I didn't break.
We can get bigger.
Move to select R.D. Olson Development as developer of the Landmark Property Hotel Site, 595 Industrial Road, 810 East San Carlos Avenue, and 850 East San Carlos Avenue, and direct the city manager to negotiate a Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I have one, or one thing I'd like to say, and I want to say this just so that these fellows understand why I'm voting the way that I am. It's no disrespect out of you. I appreciate, you know, what you guys do, building hotels and so forth, and the business that you're in, believe me. But I voted against the city going this route to begin with. To me, government is there as the referee, if you will. And instead, what we're doing is we're stepping onto the field and being the quarterback of one of the teams, in essence. There is a, there is a business that's on that site now, and the way I look at it, they're being squeezed out of business by the actions of the city, because the city wanted to see a hotel there, because the city wants to see revenue from TOT. That's not a fair way of playing game, in my opinion. And so I voted against us getting, starting down this road, and I'm going to vote against this, simply to stick with my voting record on the issue. But no disrespect to you guys and what you do for business.
Any other comments? I have one to make. It was actually about a year ago that, in this chamber, we wrestled with the issue of whether or not to take actions, which set the stage for this to happen today. And we heard from a lot of people, property owners, business owners, I believe there were comments from the diocese to this effect, too, that there will never be a hotel here on this property, ever, because there never had been. on this property, ever, because there never had been. And I do not at all mean by making these comments here to crow about, oh, it's a done deal, because we all know that there are things that could happen between now and what we all hope will be a ribbon-cutting that could make this thing fall out of bed. But I do think there's an important lesson here and an important thing for the community to notice that I don't want to, I want to make sure it doesn't pass unheralded. If you, you know, I talked a few minutes ago about building the future. Building the future requires looking forward. If all you ever do is look backwards, it's like driving your car by looking only in the rearview mirror. Works real well on I-5 in the middle of the San Joaquin Valley. Don't try it on a mountain road, okay? We have a lot of work ahead of us to get this to realization. I'm excited about the opportunity of moving forward here. I am looking forward to voting in favor of this, but I also just want, as I said, make it clear to folks, there are plenty of people who told us that even what we're doing here today could not happen, and they were wrong. And let's hope we continue to be able to build the future of San Carlos. So with that, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. Gentlemen, we talked about before. Do you want to continue the item 9B, or do you want to try and address it in the remaining 10 minutes that we have here?
How long I think it'll take?
Jeff?
Five minutes.
All right. Chris, you're on. You've got five minutes.
Why don't we let Mr. Olson, since he's come here so long with his staff? Thank you.
And thank you again for waiting so long, so.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Make this very quick, within five minutes. The intent of the amendment of the Residential Inspection Program is to remove the prior reference to fees and simply direct the reader to the master fee schedule, very simple concept, such that we don't have to keep coming back to this section in the ordinance, I'm sorry, in the municipal code and update it every time we update our master fee schedule. So it's an attempt at simply simplifying the administrative process when it comes to updating the fees every year or so. And that, in a nutshell, is why I'm standing here tonight, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Chris?
Seems reasonable to me.
I have just one quick one, which I think I know the answer to. So adopting this change will not actually change the cost to anybody.
No, it will not. What you're simply doing is removing reference to specific fees in the Apartment Inspection Program-
Okay.
...section of the municipal code. Fair enough. Any other questions?
To the mayor, just let me clarify that, because I had a hand in how we changed this. Really, there was some, the sentence, sentences that are being removed just referred to the 1999 fees, and it's, because the fee schedule gets changed every year or so, the real fee is contained in the first sentence, and the second part of that section was just surplus language that didn't have any relevancy anymore. So the idea was, let's just simplify it, as Chris said, for the public. It's the fee schedule that sets the fees. It's not this language that just referred to the 1999 fee, which was when this ordinance went into effect.
Understood. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number-
1475?
1475, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos and the City of San, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15 dot 34, Section 15 dot 34 dot 050, Residential Inspection Program.
Second.
And before we actually see if there's discussion or vote, does anybody wish to address the council on this item, which I forgot to do before we did the motion in the second? Okay, seeing none. Discussion? If not, Crystal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. Adjourning the meeting tonight, I promise, gentlemen, this will only take a second. I haven't done this recently, but I do want to adjourn the meeting in recognition of a few things, actually. First and foremost, I just want to say that our thoughts, my thoughts, I'm sure the rest of the council's thoughts, go out to the victims of the tragedy in Santa Barbara that took place just a few days ago. Some of the folks who suffered a loss as a result of the unfortunate young man who took the lives of both himself and several other people actually live in the Bay Area is yet another example of a senseless tragedy that we really ought to do better about. Secondly, as a society, secondly, it's the day after Veterans Day. The, sorry. I always think of it as Veterans Day, and you're right, it's not. It's the day after Memorial Day, on which we, among other things, honor veterans and all those who have dedicated their lives so that we can actually practice the democracy that we had in action here tonight. So I want to recognize that as well. And then lastly, you'll forgive me, I hope, of a purely personal nature, 30 years ago today, I had the great fortune of marrying my wife, and it was sort of interesting that we had to celebrate her anniversary a couple of days early, which we did in New Mexico, but I just want to say that I love her very much, and I wish I could have been with her there tonight, but duty calls.
Happy anniversary, Barbara.
Please take the candy.